Good afternoon, everyone. Let's start with Member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Member Florencio Briones.
Present.
Member Salazar de Segres.
Present.
Member David Diaz.
Here.
And Member Carlos Tomcetl. All present.
And Ligo, if you could take us into closed session, please?
Thank you. Closed session items tonight are as follows. Item A is pursuant to government code section 54957b1, public employee employment, director of risk management and safety. Item B is pursuant to government code section 54957, public employee discipline dismissal release one matter. Item C is pursuant to government code section 54956.9, D2 and E1, potential litigation one matter. Item D is pursuant to government code section 54957.6, labor negotiations for EMUAA. Item E is pursuant to government code section 54957.6, labor negotiations for EMUAA adult education. And item F is pursuant to government code section 54957.6, labor negotiations for CSE chapter one. Are there any public comments on any of the closed session items?
There's no public comment.
Okay, so with that we'll move into closed session. Here. Is somebody wearing a different cologne? All of a sudden. Thank you.
Closed session items tonight are as follows. Item A is pursuant to government code section 54957b1, public employee employment, director of risk management and safety. Item B is pursuant to government code section 54957, public employee discipline dismissal release one matter. Item C is pursuant to government code section 54956.9, D2 and E1, potential litigation one matter. Item D is pursuant to government code section 54957.6, labor negotiations for EMUAA. Item E is pursuant to government code section 54957.6, labor negotiations for EMUAA adult education. And item F is pursuant to government code section 54957.6, labor negotiations for CSE chapter one. Are there any public comments on any of the closed session items?
There's no public comment.
Okay, so with that we'll move into closed session. Here. Is somebody wearing a different cologne? All of a sudden.
Okay, welcome back and welcome to our regularly scheduled board meeting. Dr. Zuniga, if you can do roll call.
Hi, good evening, everyone. We'll start off with our member Ricardo Padilla.
Here.
Member Florentino Briones.
Present.
Member Salatorge Segres.
Bracing.
Member David Diaz.
Here.
And member Carlos Salcedo.
Here.
We don't have our student here, member Silali Palacios, yet, but I'm hopeful that she'll be here any minute. So that is it for now.
Great. Everyone can please stand for the flag salute. Place your right hand on your heart. Ready, again.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on a mission indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We all remain standing. I'd like to start this meeting with a moment of silence. A few days ago, we lost a former student, Jaylyn Kwak, unfortunately. So if we just have a moment of silence in her honor. Thank you. Okay, move to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, move to the second, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Agenda is approved. Approval of the Board of Trustees minutes, April 6, 2022, the regular meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Move to the second, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Consider approval of Board of Trustees minutes for April 13th.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One abstention, so 401. And then we move to public comments. We can have Diana Bell.
Hi, I'm here because I'd like to serve as a cautionary tale about me and my 18-year career with this district, and Donnie's gonna pass out my statement if that's okay. I've served as a course lead and created successful resources for the department. I've trained student teachers and welcomed observers. My files are packed with multiple iterations of resources I've adapted and created from scratch. If you stood outside my classroom, you'd hear laughter and enthusiastic structured discussions from a wide array of voices. You hear students daring to fail out loud and being their authentic selves and their peers practicing constructive criticism. Every year, I see considerable growth in my students, and it's the knowledge that what I'm doing is working that has kept me going. Sadly, knowing you're good at something doesn't make you impervious to the physical and mental drain that is brought on by this institution. It's been a slow boil, but the lid has officially blown off the pot. I've come to the realization, like so many others, that this daily exhaustion is not sustainable. I'd love to blame the pandemic, but I can't. The problems in education have always existed. It's just in recent years, we've been reminded that none of us are guaranteed our golden years, and there's nothing more valuable than work-life balance. As teachers, we spend weekends and holidays licking our wounds and summers promptly die in a tiny little death so we can regain enough fortitude to prepare for the next marathon known as the fall semester, which has as workings of 60, 70 hours a week. Unpaid overtime in the name of making a difference. Unta- overtime because if you don't, you won't stay afloat and you can't possibly let yourself fail at something you're so damn good at. Unpaid overtime because the system has come to expect that the altruistic people that this career tends to attract will willingly hand it over. Sacrificing our free time is almost expected of us and all, though we are, as though we are volunteers rather than highly trained professionals, as though it's not bad enough that on average nationwide, teachers take a 20% pay cut for the honor of being a teacher. Teachers get less than an hour a day to lesson plan. Parent conferences, responding emails, write behavior logs, letters of rec, attend PDs, IEPs, adjust studying charts, data, call parents, counsel a distraught teen when they attempt to navigate the minefield that is adolescence. Every day, I realize the sun has escaped me. A clear sign that the one hour of prep that I'm actually being paid for has long gone. That's okay, I think. I'll just take all these neglected ratings to the birthday party this weekend. The average teaching career is exactly where I land, 18 years. Only 30% of teachers reach retirement. 35% aren't getting beyond year five. The status quo is not sustainable, and unless teachers start to feel truly appreciated and supported, you're gonna find it increasingly hard to fill these empty positions, mine included. I assure you, when your dream job ceases to be your dream life, it's heartbreaking. I filed for a leave of absence on February 28th because I could feel myself becoming irreparably demoralized. Reason: exhaustion, social, emotional well-being. Two months later, I received a denial, no explanation, but a very clear message nonetheless: Buck up or leave. I still intend on leaving at the end of the school year because this was never about asking for permission to take care of myself. If I return to teaching in a year, I can't say it'll be here. Yet again, I've been reminded that the emphasis on one's wellness applies only to students, and I can't help but to replay the many years under my current principle that has left me feeling muted and cast aside. On behalf of myself and other course leads, I pleaded for support. Evidence of years of bullying and toxic work environment was met surreptitiously with being removed from the accelerated team and department leadership without even the courtesy of being informed directly. In the years to follow, when I wasn't being avoided altogether, he was derogatory and belittling. Not the cause for me leaving, but inexcellent for sure. I've worked with some amazing administrators, but the admin team is only as effective as its weakest link, and I beg you to be careful with who you entrust at the helm of your schools. Classes are typically filled to the brim, and every raise, even a cost of living adjustment, comes with a list of new contractual duties. Offering already overworked teachers a raise contingent upon extra obligations is akin to offering a life jacket to a drowning man on the condition he swim a few laps. It's cruel and misses the point completely. Ultimately, I know my worth. My colleagues know their worth. Without a fair contract and the respect that we deserve, it's not about if you lose more highly skilled and effective teachers, but when. Thank you for your time.
Okay, now we move to communications from EMUEA and CSEA. Dr. Zuniga.
Hi, I've not seen Ad Brazil here this afternoon, but Mr. Quick, would you like to come over? Okay, so Mr. Quick's here to represent EMUEA this evening, and we'll follow with Lisa Chambers from CSEA. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
This week is Teacher Appreciation Week. What better way to appreciate your teachers and all educational workers than with a fair and timely contract? 300 and counting of the educational workers of the EMUEA have signed on to the following EMUEA petition: Supporting Students Through Worker Empowerment. We, the educational workers of EMUEA, stand together in believing that every single education worker deserves a raise, pay equity, and the right to collaborate about major changes to their jobs, considering the impact of those changes on faculty and students in order to help our community as we come out of the COVID-19 disaster. We demand a contract by June 30. We are crucial in supporting our students in our many roles within EMUHSD: adapting new curricula and learning platforms for online personalized learning, supporting social-emotional skills, developing language and technological skills, providing access to materials and library services, preparing students for college, career, and civic responsibilities, promoting student wellness through counseling and health assistance, and performing countless other services that are vital to keeping our schools working for all. A fair contract is both timely and respectful, done before the end of June, going well beyond the cost of living adjustment the school district receives from the state, and improving provisions supporting collegial and equitable treatment. Supporting educational workers supports our students.
Hi, good evening. I don't have anything prepared, but I would like to say congratulations to Ernie, Classified Employee of the Year. We have many things to celebrate: teacher appreciation. We have Happy Cinco de Mayo tomorrow, Happy Mother's Day, and in two weeks is Classified Employee Week. And I brought buttons for everybody to have, and we'll be passing them out to classified employees at the sites. And as you can tell, we're moving forward with our negotiations. And I wish everybody a successful end of the school year and graduation, and happy days. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. But with that, Dr. Zuniga, we turn it over to you for our recognition for Classified Employee of the Year.
Thank you, President Salcedo, and again, good evening, everyone. This is an opportunity in the agenda to recognize on an annual basis our Classified Employee of the Year. And the way the process occurs is on a rotation basis, we allow the opportunity for school leaders and schools to explore the employee who has just stood out not only one year but has provided countless dedication to the school community, whether it's in the classroom, outside the classroom. We feel that Mr. Arjaga and the team this year hit it all of the ballpark. My first experience with Ernie and meeting Mr. Alvarado was at CDS, as a matter of fact, and just a magnet of Fernando Ladesma. And if you don't know where CDS is, it's one of our small schools by a rural high school, actually, north end of the campus there, where our students attend, in a small environment. But this individual I met when I was walking on campus through my visit for the first time, first person who said hello to me and greeted me, walked me through the classes, and first impression go a long way, in my opinion. So after that, I said, I left today, is that I think those kids are in good hands with this young man here. I hope you don't mind calling me young man, because you're younger than I am. But nevertheless, I am very excited to bring Mr. Arjaga up here to speak a little bit more about Ernie Alvarado and also why he was selected as this year's Classified Employee of the Year. So congratulations to Ernie, but also have Mr. Arjaga now come in, formally introduce him, a little bit about his accomplishments at Fernando Ladesma, and probably also at CDS than wherever he has served in the past. Good evening, Mr. Arjaga.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to start by greeting our Board President Salcedo, Board members, colleagues, and our honored guests that are here today. To me, this is one of my favorite meetings and events of the school year for many obvious reasons. We have so many people that make this district run the way it does, and I've been successful in my career and as a student here in this district because of our classified employees and how important they are to everyone here. So I love this meeting because of that. And this year, it's our turn to select somebody, which is something I look forward to when it comes around to us. Fortunately, in the Almonte Union High School District, we have many great candidates that can be nominated. But unfortunately, we have to choose one, which makes this election even more special. The Classified Employee of the Year from Fernando Ladesma is Ernie Alvarado. And he has been in our district for 13 years since 2008. He has worked as a campus supervisor at Community Day School, learning and growing, and really understanding what our mission statement is, because that is one place where you can really learn about our mission statement and how we don't give up on students. And he's also worked at Fernando Ladesma High School. This past year, he was selected to be our community liaison for Fernando Ladesma High School, as well as a Community Day School. Many of you have met Ernie because he volunteers, and volunteer meaning he's always the first one to volunteer. And yes, he gets paid, but Ernie's also knowing to put in a lot of extra overtime without getting paid because he's just a team player. So you have met him at many of our district events, and many people have asked over the last few years who he is. Well, who is Ernie Alvarado? Ernie Alvarado graduated from San Gabriel High School as a matador in 1995. Ernie coached baseball for many years at San Gabriel High School, Monterey Park Angels travel team, and he coached at Dodger Stadium at a CIF championship team from Northview High School. And he's also coached on a semifinal game. He's very, very humble about his coaching ability, but in my opinion, I believe he's the best baseball coach in the district. That doesn't coach anymore. He has also developed several players from these teams that have gone on to very many impressive places to play ball, such as Long Beach State, Cal State Fullerton, Arizona State, and into numerous professional minor league teams. He has also mentored at early ages recently players that have played at Vanderbilt University, USC again, Dominguez Hills, and the University of Portland. What's it Ernie apart from other candidates this past year? Yes, he excelled in the basic expectations we have for all our colleagues, employees, who serve in our community and our district. First, Ernie is extremely consistent, productive, and possesses many high qualities in carrying out his responsibilities. Ernie is an enthusiastic employee who is willing to take up more initiatives and accepts tasks that supports everyone around him, as well as help him grow. He is extremely punctual and dependable and is always eager to lend a helping hand to everyone. Ernie has a positive eye and attitude on all his work responsibilities and makes him stand out as a role model. He works great in team settings either within or assigned a new district team. He also communicates extremely well and takes ownership in all his growth areas. All these qualities are very critical to being selected Classified Employee of the Year as part of the job descriptions. But now, let's talk about the qualities that make Ernie extra special. The qualities that truly show his support and commitment to our mission statements and love for our students, staff, and community, as well as culture, are as follows. Ernie has demonstrated in many ways the extra efforts he makes in order to support everyone around him. Let me make something clear, and when I say let me make something clear, it's I want to highlight this about Ernie. And this is what makes Ernie fun to work with. Ernie does not talk about all the great things he does, or what he gets paid, or doesn't get paid, because he just simply takes pride in his work and enjoys the student's success and colleague's success, anybody he works with. Ernie simply demonstrates everything he does by his actions. What are some of these actions? And I think this is where Ernie really stood out to the district office as well. During COVID, he was always the first one to volunteer at all the sites to support our students and community with the distribution of breakfast and lunch. He was the first one from our site to volunteer at all the vaccination sites, including the City of Hope. When the time came to support, when the time came to start opening our school for the employees, the district set up a strict schedule that required various consistent cleaning procedures. that required various consistent cleaning procedures that were vital for the staff and students returning to our sites. Ernie not only maintained a rigorous cleaning schedule, but went above and beyond to help his colleagues with the same routine. You know, when Santiago Avila says, "Ernie is such a big help." I don't know what we would do without him during these difficult times, that that means something. I believe Ernie played a major role in helping the district office accomplish their goal in safely opening up our district for our students to return to school. I believe Ms. Torres would agree with me as she quickly discovered Ernie's eagerness to assist and be helpful in any assignment. I can go on and on with the examples of Ernie's impressive work ethic, but I believe you get the idea. Personally, as a principal, he is extremely valuable to me because he allows me to focus and spend my energy on what's important, which is our students, staff, and community. Overall, we truly appreciate, we really appreciate you, Ernie. And I love your can-do attitude every day you come to work. You deserve this recognition. By the way, he also volunteers just about every weekend in the sheriff's office. And he would have been a sheriff, had an injury, but he still volunteers weekly with the sheriff's office. You deserve this recognition. We are fortunate to have you in the Almonte Union High School District. And I believe this is what makes us special is that we develop individuals like Ernie and we entrust them to be around our students, and they make us look good. So thank you, Ernie, and I'm lucky to have you.
I'd like to welcome Ernie to up here in the front where he'll be presented with the certificate of recognition from the board. I'm going to hand it over to our president right now. And also, we have a couple other features that we'd like to showcase. As, you know, it's not just for tonight, it's for the rest of his career that he was the Classified Employee of the Year. And to demonstrate that through the Human Resources Office, we'll go ahead and display that too. So we're going to go and do that at this point. So, Mr. Salcedo.
Okay, well, Mr. Alvarado. I'm not going to call you young man because then that makes me old. I didn't mean anything by that, Dr. Zuniga. But let me first tell you, I mean, just the remarks by Mr. Artiaga, I think nothing says outstanding or nothing makes me as a board member feel proud of honoring a person like you than hearing your fellow colleagues say those nice things and former students. And it just, it means the world. Someone like me, my day job is a school principal. You know, and I've been blessed with several community liaisons, right? And I think a community liaison is one of those, like Mr. Artiaga said, allows him to do the instruction part, allows him to do the outreach with his teachers. At the same time, having somebody like you, having the pulse of the community, to know what's going on with the students and the parents, right? So I know that somebody like you is worth much more than just one position, right? And I, trust me, Mr. Artiaga, all the baseball stuff you said, I appreciate that too because, you know, maybe Fernando Ladesma have a baseball team. Practice indoors, I don't know. But definitely, just congratulations, Ernie. I'm going to read the certificate that we have for you here, and then we'll have the rest of the board make some comments before you make some comments. And it just says, "Certificate of Recognition Presented to Ernie Alvarado from Fernando Ladesma High School for being selected as the 2022 Classified Employee of the Year and for your outstanding dedication and commitment to the students and staff of the district. Congratulations from the Almonte Union High School District Board of Trustees. Congratulations." So, Mr. Padilla, my colleagues will start on my left.
Absolutely. I just want to congratulate you, Mr. Alvarado or Ernie Alvarado. As a school board member, I couldn't agree more with my colleague that that is the fun part, when we recognize employees, when we recognize students for their achievements. And, you know, Fernando Ladesma is a wonderful place to go to school. It's probably one of my favorite schools to visit as a school board member. Everybody's so polite, so respectful, the staff, the principals, the front line in the office, the students. It's just an awesome place, and awesome places deserve awesome people like you. And it's awesome people like you that make Fernando Ladesma an awesome place. So thank you for all of your contributions, and you definitely go above and beyond. I'm a basketball coach myself, and I haven't been coaching because of COVID. But, you know, you encompass everything. You're the person who's the front line to deal with parents. Community liaisons deal with the parents or work with the parents. And I know that when many parents go there, they're a little bit apprehensive or a little bit nervous about their child going there or about what they've heard in the past, you know? They think that it's not a safe place. And you could talk about it all you want, but until you get a parent that shows up there and you actually get to walk them through the classrooms and they get to see that it's a regular high school, just like the rest with a lot of supports, you put them at ease, and that's, you're the front line to deal with parents. And then building those positive relationships with the kids so that they trust you and that they know that if they're in trouble, if they have a problem, they have somebody to go to. Sometimes they might not want to go to the principal because they'll say, "Oh, my God, that's like the principal. I don't want to go over there." You need like a intermediary in between, and that's where the community liaison comes in. And yes, Mr. Salcedo does work with the community liaison as a principal at, in his school, in the Almonte City School District. And I can tell you, working with community liaisons in Almonte City School District, I work at four different sites as a child welfare person. And sometimes when I'm dealing with an attendance issue, I'll be like, "Hey, Ms. Community Liaison, you got any background on this family or on the student?" And they're very helpful. You're the kind of one who knows where everything's at, you know, and some of the experiences that the kids have had. And so I wish you the best in this new position, and thank you, thank you for what you do, not just at Fernando Ladesma, but even beyond the school setting and working with the sheriff's department and caring about the community and going above and beyond. So it's a pleasure to put your name on this plaque that we will be displayed in our district. And your parents should be proud, or your spouse should be proud. Congratulations, señor. Very proud.
Let me just say, I'm a little bit jealous. Being a former classified employee myself, the most recognition I ever got was Employee of the Month one time. And even then, I didn't, I didn't actually, I wasn't told until like six months later that I had been recognized. You know, I let it go. Dr. Morales and I made up after that. But, you know, it's employees like you, as Mr. Padilla stated, you know, that create those awesome environments on our campuses. And I'm always happy when we have the recognitions of our employees, of our students, and our families because it reminds us why we're here. We're here for the benefit of our students, and the work that you do speaks to that philosophy. And as Mr. Padilla said, sometimes our parents, who may not understand the process or maybe might feel intimidated to go to a principal or director or even the superintendent, will feel comfortable to come to you or to our community liaisons. So I really want to say thank you from the bottom of my heart for all the work that you put in, you know, the dedication to our students and our families because it takes that extra effort to make sure that our families get those services, those resources that they are truly deserving of. And it's because of your efforts that they do get them. So thank you so much. Congratulations.
Sounds like Mr. Brión is trying to say that it takes a village to raise a child over there. Mr. Alvarado, what baseball team do you root for? Dodgers, okay. I like this guy a lot, a lot. Now, congratulations sincerely. Thank you for all your hard work. You know, in 13 years, I caught some of what Mr. Artiaga was saying. Coach, mentor, volunteer, team player, consistent, self-starter, punctual, dependable, helpful, positive attitude, role model, great communicator. Really, it seems like to continue using baseball analogies, a utility player. You can do a little bit of everything. So, you know, sincere thanks for all the work and, you know, all of, all that you give to our community, you know? I think what we heard tonight is that you really give a lot of yourself to others. And that's, it's a lot of work, physical work, emotional work. It's not easy. So sincere thanks for myself for doing that work. And I hope you take some time for self-care after all that giving. And so congratulations to you and your family. We're lucky to have you in this high school district. Congratulations.
Mr. Alvarado, in the many years that I've been in education, I consider that the administrators are very important, of course, the students, administrators, the personal educativo. But for me, in all of these years, I think that the classified are the best. You know why? You give the environment that the student need. Not only physically, also emotionally. Tender with your love. I know you for many years. Each time that I go to Fernando Ladesma, you are always with good smile, always very active, helping. That's the kind that we need. That's the kind of people that we need for our students. And of course, you get this prize because of all the things that you have been doing, but the most important for the love that you give to your students. Thank you very much, and congratulations.
First of all, I thank you guys for the kind words and you giving me, Mr. Artiaga, thank you as well. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'm incredibly honored to be here tonight to receive such an award for Employee of the Year. It humbles me so much to see that all the work I do does not go unrecognized. I would like to thank my family, who is here with me tonight, for the support that they've given me throughout the years. I cannot forget the support that has been offered to me by my colleagues and my supervisor, Mr. Artiaga, who have provided me with the good working environment. And while this award is addressed to me, their efforts in making this possible should not go unnoticed. Since I became an employee at Almonte Union High School District, I have driven my motivation from the mission statement that all students be accorded quality service. Over the years, we have, over the year, we have unfolded various initiatives to meet those missions. I look forward to next year and years to come as we continue to provide support and help our students achieve their goals. Thank you.
What's at this time we're going to take?
Yes.
Yes. Dearest to the dearest. Good? Okay. Let's now continue. Dr. Zuniga, if you'd like to introduce our next presentation.
Yeah, thank you, President Salcedo, and again, welcome back, everyone. At this time, we're moving on to item C2, which is the annual report or update from the Chief Technology and Innovation Officer, Eric Steelman. He's here to provide the board with highlights from the first year of our adoption of our new student information system titled Synergy. That is the name of our SIS program. I'm sure you've become familiar with that term. I also want to highlight some of the things that Mr. Steelman has been working on just within his office over the last couple of years. As you can see, that a lot of changes have occurred with education and technology innovation. I couldn't have asked for an individual to, to lead our district in this avenue. I am not the technology expert. I know Mr. Padilla certainly not is a technology expert himself either. Him and I have had several conversations about that, but that's okay. We, we have someone here who has led, has led the district in, you know, the pandemic years through the adoption of the one-to-one initiative, through the collection of data, through just various ideas that we've tried to do. And I'm so proud about what the district has done over the last couple of years on behalf of this gentleman here and this leader. So, without further ado, and before he was able to leave on vacation, he had to come here and do this presentation. His 21st birthday is coming up, so happy early birthday, Mr. Steelman. But you have an assignment to do today, so we're going to hand it over to you and get your homework done. So, thank you again.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, board. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity. It's my eighth year here with the district, so it's my eighth opportunity to kind of do a technology year in the review. We are going to focus, as Dr. Zuniga said, a little bit more on the student information system rollout. The last couple of years, we've been focusing in on the classroom and what we've been doing for distance learning in the pandemic. So, we're going to shift gears just a little bit. And of course, I have to start off the inner geek. I have to have the May the Fourth be with you on there, so allow me that little bit of indulgence there. But our agenda, just very briefly, is to go over the student information system to talk a little bit about some of the changes for our Access for All program. I want to thank the board for a couple of the items that are listed there for some network improvements that were improved at the last board meeting, as well as some safety improvements that were also improved at the last meeting. Want to talk about some collaboration that we're doing with facilities in the business department for our modernization plans that are happening at multiple school sites right now, and then just a little bit of our future goals. So, just indulge me just for a little bit. So, the synergy transition has probably been the most exciting and most arduous project. For those of you that don't know, in education, the student information system really is the lifeblood of any district. All attendance, grading, transcripts, anything and everything related to data. But even more so because there is now more than 50 different educational technology applications that are being used in and outside of the classroom that feed off of this particular system. And I use those, that graphic there up at the top there of, it's really important because everybody's looking at the student information system from different vantage points. They're trying to get different data out of it. And so, I wanted to remind the board that when we started this process two years ago, that these were the main goals in which the board, as well as us and, and all of our stakeholders, including our staff members, had identified areas in which they'd like to see improvement. We did have four different applications up until this year that made up the student information system. We had ARMS for the SIS side. We had TRS for teachers. We had School Loop that was being used for grading and portals. And then, we had created our own student portal with our very brilliant programmer to make up for information that was missing off of the School Loop portal. And so, it was really important that we had a unification of the system. Once you have that, then you can do a lot more with data. And so, data empowerment from all stakeholder standpoint, making sure that the data is readily available to anyone and everyone and definitely in their native, native languages. Increasing the opportunity for interventions, once you're making the data more readily available, they're not having to go search for it, was a big, big component for us. And of course, enhancing our online portals, adding online registration, taking as much opportunity as we possibly could to digitize things, which really the pandemic brought on and kind of thrust upon us. But it's been, we've been embracing that opportunity and certainly rolling as much into the system as we possibly can. More automation, more data validation, the cleaner the data is, the cleaner the data goes out. And that makes it so that auditors don't, you know, their, their eyes don't twitch when they're looking at our data. And then, of course, being more intentional about the interactions and resource sharing that's going on within our classrooms. And so, with that being said, our arduous journey started, like I said, three years ago, we actually signed the contract, which thank you to the board for ratifying that. We started last year with the, the process of doing all of the, the data migration pieces, which is really, really important. We did seven rounds of data migration. And really, what that means is you're taking out portions from your current system and you're, you're starting a process that emulates it going into the new. And you do data validation checks and you make sure that everything is laid out the way that it's supposed to be. Soon as you find errors, you're going back to your scripts and you're changing them so that the next iteration, it comes in cleaner. And really, the goal is, when you get through all three or all seven of these, these rounds, that when you end the school year and you have to gather up all of that data to move it from one system to the next, it flows in perfectly, everything's already been tested, and then you can start the new year, hopefully, without any issues, at least from a data perspective. We created all of our master schedules in our old system to make the transition easier. We didn't want to have to have all of our system principals creating a master schedule in a new system while they were still concurrently using the old. So, that made it so that when we, when we ended the year, that we could just take those schedules that had already been built and put them right into the system, which made it easy for us to start. As I said, or as you see down at the bottom, we, we started live in, in summer of 2021. We conducted over 200 trainings, both virtual and in person. We really had to roll with the punches with the pandemic. We would have preferred to have as many of those in person, but we took all of those trainings. We did recordings of each and every one of them. Some of them we offered more than once, if there was a lot of people that needed to attend. We built an intranet site, so we have an internal training site that, that houses all of the manuals, all of the videos, little quick videos that we've created outside of that, and any additional quick reference guides that we've created internally outside of what the company Edgipoint had created for our staff. We did go live in 2021. I don't know why most districts don't go live in summer as opposed to waiting to fall, because I think it's, you don't know what you don't know, and it's really a good opportunity to start small and learn all of those. It's Murphy's Law. You, you just expect that something is going to happen that you didn't plan for. So, it was very advantageous that we did go live at that particular point. And then, of course, we went live with all school sites in fall of 2021. The positive outcomes thus far, and I'm, I'm certainly not going to say that there hasn't been negative and it hasn't been challenging times, but we really wanted to highlight some of the goals, going back to the previous slide. We do have all of the systems now, now integrated into one, which is exactly what we set out to do. We did start our very first day with schedules intact. Everybody was able to take attendance. Everybody was trained. Grading was flowing. In fact, all of our grading submissions over the last four or five terms have been on time, and that's something that we couldn't do despite our best, best efforts in the previous system. So, having it all integrated is definitely saving us time going forward. The student and parent portals were launched. They are working great. Of course, there are Of course, there are things that people like about the old. You know, there is no perfect system, but the data is far more transparent from a student perspective, from a parent perspective. You're seeing transcript data, you're seeing attendance. It's all live information. You're not waiting for something nightly to come, and so it's far more transparent than it's ever been in the past. Online registration has been a pretty significant success over the prior year. We had to bring out a new system in the pandemic that was never meant to be used for online registration. So with Synergy, they actually have a system that's built in that's doing a whole bunch of data validation checks along the way. It has made the collection of information far better. The integrations of the language translations are all built into it, and we're continuing that momentum going into next year. There's going to be far less that our clerks are going to have to do on their end in order to approve the information, so the workflow is getting better and better. Our transition, our adult transition center, our online personalized learning, and our opportunity programs have now been branched out to be their own schools within the SIS, which has allowed us a lot of ability to customize the teachers, the programs, the sections, the master schedule, the bell schedules, which we were never able to do in the past. And I can't tell you enough how amazing it's been that we were going through that transition right at the time, just pure dumb luck, right, that it's going through with the pandemic because it would have been very hard for us to try to create that in our old system. Our programmer would have pulled out the rest of the hair that he actually has left if he had to actually pull that off. But one of the positives out of that, because we have different programs now and we branched it out, is 1,000 less sections in our master schedule. So from an accountability standpoint, that's really, really important that you're not seeing all of these fictitious sections that maybe only have one or two students that are all being collected. And once again, from an accountability standpoint, that's super important for us. The staff has absolutely been amazing. You know, they've thrown darts at me multiple times. I'm used to it. It's Change Management 101. You know, people hold on to, even if they know that the program is potentially better or the processes is potentially better, or it's getting us closer to where we want to be with our goals, they hold on to what they know, right? And so I don't take it personal. Our staff has been doing a fantastic job of making sure that they have all the support mechanisms that they need during this transition, and I just, I can't thank them enough. The data submissions are all being done on time, and that's really, for the first year, the goal is to survive, especially coming off of a pandemic, right? And so now we can start to build off of this incredible momentum and start to get to some of the things that we were hoping to get to all along. So year two, year three, there are some pretty exciting features that are going to be coming out in the new version of our student information system. A couple of them I didn't mention on here, but of course, data empowerment is probably the most important. MTSS is something that we've been talking about for quite some time, multi-tiered systems of support and building in interventions so that we're taking our plan and actually building in mechanisms within the system to account for what happens when a student falls off of specific tiers and what's the documented intervention and who are those groups that are actually working with them. Now we'll have the ability to track that within our system, which we're super excited about. There's also a new workflow for counselors where students can actually request to meet with their counselor within the application. It sets up a meeting time. It allows for the counselors to do a digital hall pass and sets up reminders for them and then document all of the interactions as they're meeting with that counselor. So we're excited about that. There's also a new tool that's coming in that's going to allow students to basically take attendance as they come in through the back door. If we have a Chromebook set up there in the back of the room, they'll come in with their ID. It takes a picture of them as they scan to ensure that I'm just not coming in for Carlos and using his ID. It is actually who it's supposed to be. And so it's exciting to have a partner that is looking for ways to save teachers' time and to give more time back to classroom instruction, which is where it belongs to be. So we'll be testing out a lot of those features, but that's basically Synergy in a nutshell. Our digital equity efforts are continuously growing. You know, we're so super proud of our Access for All program. As Dr. Zuniga said, we started this process three years ago. Once again, we got very lucky in the timing of it with the pandemic. So, but it has now been expanded to all school sites, so all truly means all within the district. You know, bridging the digital divide is something that we're incredibly proud of. I constantly am saying, I feel like we've eliminated at least the access side of this. And now we're just working on the equity efforts, right? So we have worked with Zeke Lally and the Student Advisory Committee to do Chromebooks that are better for our students, more ruggedized. We don't want to be in a position where we're paying for students' devices to get repaired or they're having to pay us to get things repaired. So we're looking to make, you know, make the devices better, stronger, last longer because certainly the devices are getting used a heck of a lot more than they were in the past, and we never really expected them to be such an integral part. We always thought it was going to be supplementary, but now it literally has replaced all the textbooks, right? So we now support over 10,000 devices. Our Project 10 Million, and that's on a daily basis, both on and off-site. Our Project 10 Million has been expanded, so we've now given out over 5,000 devices, MiFi hotspots, since the program's exception. We have over 1,000 devices now currently in the hands of students, and we have a great program, once again, thanks to the business department for working with us, Ester funding, LCAP funding, so that if students have additional bandwidth requirements, they're now getting the data that they need when they go home. So before, it was they would hit that cap and then that data would shut down, and we didn't have anything else to really help them. But now we have unlimited data to help out those students that truly have the need, and we're constantly analyzing the data to make sure that those students are meeting the requirements of that because there is a cost associated with that. Emergency connectivity fund, you may have heard of this acronym, ECF. This is something that came out from the federal government when the pandemic first hit. It's additional funds that districts are made readily available to them from the federal government outside of the E-Rate program to basically help for one-to-one efforts, to help with the MiFi efforts. You know, we have had to expand it. This is an agenda item on consent for CSM Consulting. They are going to be submitting an application. It's potentially an additional $500,000 that's coming to us. I want to thank Mr. Breones, who reached out to us last week. I think he was meeting with the head of the FCC, and he sent a text to Dr. Zuniga and I and said, hey, do you have any questions for the head of the FCC? And I'm like, heck, yeah, I do. And it was related specifically to the ECF funding and ensuring that that funding was going to stay. Even though it's no longer an emergency, it's important for all school districts to have that additional funding for those devices and for those MiFi's because it's, we're not going to go backwards, all right? This is the new norm. So we got to make sure we have continuous funding for that. Additional innovations that are coming through, you guys, the board did approve Ester funding for the replacement of all of our network enclosures. That's a, the network enclosure is that picture that's there on the left-hand side. We have 75 of these throughout our campuses, 20, 30 years old. You have metal cabinets with networking equipment that is constantly beating down by the heat, and it's giving off heat itself. And so you can imagine what happens to that equipment over time. They have to be maintained. Unfortunately, these systems are all legacy, and so we dedicated about $1 million to Ester funding for that. Not only are the cabinets getting removed and new ones coming in, they're much more hardened. In fact, Palm Springs Unified uses these, so if they work in Palm Springs, they're definitely going to work here in Almani. But all new equipment inside, all faster throughput, so once again, it leads into the next bullet. When we first built our wireless network, we put an access point that you see directly above me in every one of our classrooms. We built for coverage, we didn't build for density, right? So we made sure that no matter where the kids are going on campus, that they'll at least have a connection. But what's happening now is, if you've heard of this acronym, IoT, Internet of Things, it basically is everything that is connecting to the internet, your smartwatch, your smartphone, even there's clothes these days. Even the urinals are on the network these days. And so unfortunately, these one-access points in every classroom, they're creating choke points. They're never meant to handle more than maybe 60, 70 connections simultaneously. And so next year, we're going to be coming and we're going to be beefing that up. New access points will be replaced in the classroom that allow anywhere from 200 to 300 simultaneous connections at a much faster rate, and that'll help out the teachers because the need for technology in the classroom just continues to grow and grow. You approved camera surveillance and campus safety. Once again, we just kicked off that project, thanks to the board, last board meeting, so an additional 120 to 130 cameras coming that are going to address walkways, stairwells, gym, main office, and bathroom exits. We have access control systems that are coming down the pipe, and that's really, access control is a fancy way of saying we're taking our physical locks and we're making digital locks. And so it's going to make the process, all of this stuff is all cost savings for us in the long run, and it certainly adds an extra layer of just convenience for our staff. Catapult is our emergency management system. When we go on lockdowns, not all of our systems talk to one another, the PA announcements, certainly door locks. So it is our goal that if we, those last two bullets, if we do it just right, that when we actually go on lockdowns, doors lock, PA announcements, visual alerts, audible alerts, so everything is going to tie in, and that's basically the goal that we're working on in that particular area. 21st Century Classrooms, we've talked about this. You've seen demonstrations of the CEC next door. All the modernization plans that we're doing right now actively for South Almani. South Almani is actively going Mountain View, and we just started the process for Rosemead. Of course, it's going to make its way to all the school sites, but 21st Century classroom concepts are being worked into each one of those plans. No front of the room, no back of the room, mobility all over the place, lots of natural lights, rideable surfaces, you know, adjustable chairs. We take everything into consideration, and I know the board is going to be seeing in the future. This is a little tidbit about the Professional Development Center. We're planning a redesign into a parent center, and once again, more natural light coming in and a lot more technology within that group or within that room. So we're excited about that. I know you're going to get a whole presentation on that soon. And that's the presentation in a nutshell. I just really want to thank the board. We've had just a numerous amount of technology initiatives over the last five years, especially during the pandemic, and you all have been so incredibly supportive. All of our agenda items have been going through, and even though we've been having declining enrollment, our area has really never been busier. And so that's really important for us that you've given, you've given that confidence to the department to do what it needs to do. I'm always mindful, the Very Forest Board Meeting, there was one board member, I think it was Ms. Telemontes, that had said, hey, that's all well and good, but what can I do for you? And that's where I always come back to you and just say, please, just be mindful of, even if it's not technological, if there's a better way to do something, whether it be process or procedure, you know, we want to keep pushing forward. Someday, we'll get Mr. Padilla to not use his paper agenda. He's getting picked on tonight, I'm sorry. But we'll keep pushing forward on that. Once again, it doesn't necessarily have to be technological, but just keep in mind, we keep buying stuff over and over and over again, and at some point, you know, we reach this point of diminishing return. We have to put a little bit into either more infrastructure to support it, potentially more staff. So, but once again, just be mindful that just because we have declining enrollment doesn't mean that our area is diminishing, it's only ramping up. So that's all I can ask.
Thank you, Mrs. Steelman. Thank you for the presentation. Comments or questions, starting from my right, Ms. Torres de Segur.
Look at all the things that you have been doing without permission. Four times you say, thanks to the board, thanks to the board. Thank you very much to you, that all the things that you're doing for our students. It's really hard to, for me, it's really hard to follow you and all the good things that you have been doing. But I know that the students are getting a really good, good, good learning in the use of the technology. Our high school is at the level of, I say that most of the high schools in a good situation, and our students are prepared. Thank you very much for all this work, and keep asking us, and we will tell you, yes, yes, yes. While you are doing everything for our students, we give you thanks. Thank you, Mrs. Steelman. Thank you very much.
Mr. Diaz?
Yeah, thank you, Board President Salcedo. Mr. Steelman, thank you so much for your work. I'm wondering, outside of campus, what we can do or what you're thinking about in potential next steps, particularly with the infrastructure part. We know that the equipment is helpful right now, right, for connectivity, laptops, temporary hotspots that they get, the hotspots that they get. But I think there's a larger digital divide that happens with inequity in access to the internet, speed, capacity, all those things. In respect to the district's role or what you envision the district's role to be in making sure we have equitable access to the internet or online, what are your thoughts around that and how can we be helpful?
Yeah, I know that there's an initiative with the state and also with the county to basically do away with the need for MiFi devices and to basically have local area network readily available and utilize the wireless network so that wherever the kids are going, regardless if it's on our campus or at home, they'll have the connection that they need. So we're supplying the device, but that's still the biggest need, and it's really the challenge on our staff to kind of stay up with those. It's just yet another device that we have to keep, you know, in the pandemic, when those students were going home, you know, and we had to debug issues that they were having at home, you know, we were basically serving as their tech liaison, you know, trying to figure out what their setup was there, and we were not really set up to do that. So the more that, you know, the cities can actually, you know, bring in that infrastructure and make it more ubiquitous for everybody, everybody's going to benefit in that particular case.
Yeah, and I know some time ago, the City of El Monte was doing that survey around internet connectivity. Did you get a chance to connect with them at all, or Dr. Zuniga, about the results of the survey or what's next?
So we did see that the program that the state is proposing, and I forget the actual acronym for it, but it does have parts of Rosemead, portions of Almani, and portions of South Almani included in that in its first draft. So that's exciting that that is going to be coming down the pipe. I just don't know what exactly it's going to look like and when it's going to happen. But that work is, has already started, so that's exciting in and of itself.
You think we can get that in our board memo, potentially?
Yeah, I'll be happy to do that. Sure.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Great. Mr. Breones?
Thank you, President Salcedo. Thank you, Mr. Steelman, for your presentation. No questions other than a couple of comments. One, thank you for being so responsive. You know, as you stated, when I was in DC, and I'll report to the board on this during roundtable, having access to Chairwoman of the FCC, you know, it was a key that, you know, we asked those questions right then in that moment. And so I want to thank you and Dr. Zuniga for providing questions to ask and specific funding requests to them. One of the things that you mentioned with the emergency connectivity fund, the ECF, so I did discuss this with the Chairwoman, and she mentioned to myself and the group that I was in that there are two bills in Congress right now that we could advocate for. First one is HR 4663 from Congresswoman Meng from New York's 6th District, and then S2447 from Senator Edward Markey from Massachusetts. And I'm sure you would know Senator Markey is the original author of the E-Rate program legislation. So there is an opportunity to solicit additional funding for ECF, but more importantly, I think as you stated in your messages, for more flexibility and to incorporate it permanently into the E-Rate funding. So I think this is key because it shows, one, this is what we can do with the appropriate funding or with additional funding, but if we're provided the appropriate level of funding, whether it's for tech or instruction or whatever it may be, there's so much more that can be done. And to your point, Mr. Diaz, including providing ubiquitous access in collaboration with our local municipalities. When I was an employee here, your predecessor shared with me one time that if he had the ability to, both the administrative as well as the fiscal ability, he would blanket this entire valley with Wi-Fi. And I really think that that's, that was an ambitious goal 20 years ago. I think it's still an ambitious goal today, but I think it's within reach because we need to, we need to provide for that equitable access. And I do want to say thank you to you and to your staff for the hard work that you put in during the pandemic. I think I've shared this before, and I definitely have shared it with colleagues in the past. When March 13th, 2020 came around, we were ahead of the game already because we had already instituted a one-to-one program. And, you know, when I looked at other schools during the pandemic, you know, sometimes seven, eight, nine months later, they were just getting equipment delivered to them because there were supply chain issues, because there were so many folks, institutions, government entities, what have you, you know, ordering equipment, and there were delays. Whereas our students from March, you know, when they came back two weeks later from that extended break, they hit the ground running. You know, it wasn't without its hiccups, but we definitely were way ahead of the game than most other school districts, not only in the San Gabriel Valley, but also throughout LA County in California. So my hat's off to all of you for your hard diligent work. And, you know, if we request more funding and it becomes available, you know, I look forward to what more amazing things you guys can do. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and thank you for the acknowledgement because my staff is truly, you know, they set the bar really for San Gabriel Valley. They're absolutely phenomenal. I'm very, very blessed in that.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Steelman, for your work. I really appreciate, you know, all of the services that our students have received over the years, you know. And yes, I have, I'm not always, I don't care for technology for myself. I'll be the first to agree, you know, agree with you, but this is my 30th year in education. So, but I do advocate because I know that all of our students are on all these different platforms, and I could see why they would clog up that little thing that you guys put up there because everything is based around that. And, you know, you and I have not, haven't always seen eye, and I've been here back to when Telemontes was here. I've been here for a long time. And I remember at the time, it wasn't Project 10 Million, it was Project 1 Million. You recall? And I remember that I turned up And I remember that I turned up the heat on you. I don't know if you remember, I said, I want to do that program. And I remember, yeah, because you balked. You're like, oh, that's too much work and yada, 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 yada. And then more board members came and we turned up the heat a little more, and then now we're at 10 million. And so finally, we got to a one-to-one, which was great. And I remember that you did the survey and stuff, and I didn't agree with some of the numbers that were in the survey that we had done. But I agree that when the pandemic came, it didn't catch us with our pants down. We were ahead of the game because we had turned up the heat with you, with your staff, with the additional tech support staff that we hired for you so that we were able to make this happen. If you recall, we also wanted the devices to go home. And then, you know, we kind of had a disagreement there, and some people were like, well, we don't want to send them home because they're going to be on YouTube and they might break it and they might steal it and they might do this. And I was like, that's a crock of baloney. I said, send us things home and you're going to see that our kids are going to be just fine. And I think that's what we've discovered over this whole process of getting the one-to-one is that our kids are not going to destroy these things. Yeah, there's going to be those that do that, but like with any program, you're not always going to have, you know, just like synergy is not the perfect program. There's nothing a perfect program. But to me, I remember at the time, I was like, that reasoning just does not go with me, you know. I'm not going to hold back and not allow our kids to take these devices home and provide, you know, MiFi devices just because we think that they're going to steal them or they're going to break them or they're going to do, you know, be on YouTube or whatever, social media, Facebook, Twitter, whatever. And I think our kids rose to the occasion, and that's thanks to, you know, us, you know, giving you direction or giving you your marching orders or giving Dr. Zuniga his marching orders, and then he gives them to you in terms of the direction that we want to go. But we've come a long way. I do have to give kudos where kudos are deserved. And, you know, in your position, when you come here asking for a lot of money, yes, I'm the one who always questions you. And you know that Mr. Padilla is going to say something, so you better be ready because I'm going to ask you. So the question I have is, in terms of bandwidth, you know what I mean? With all this stuff that's coming, tell me about our bandwidth and make it really easy so like a regular person like me can understand it. How big is our bandwidth? And are we getting close to like, you know, filling it up where we need more and we're going to have like a clogged freeway or congestion for all of our devices?
I'm glad you asked. We actually, in terms of the San Gabriel Valley, we're pretty much number one, right? So we have, we have 10, we have two 10 gigabit internet pipes basically coming into the district and to Rosemead. We're only using 20% of our total bandwidth right now. And that's partially because we have a little bit of chokehold. So I'm curious to see when we actually replace those, if that will actually go up. But when they go home, once again, we have the program in place that is now eliminating bandwidth from being an issue because unlimited is truly unlimited, so.
So we're using 20%, but it's because of our limitation of some of our hardware that's not taking...
Potentially, yeah. I mean, we do hear, we don't hear a lot of complaints from the classroom, but we do hear from teachers that are integrating more with ed tech apps that, hey, there is a little bit of a slowdown, certain periods over others, and it's possibly due to that. But we're doing everything we can.
Great to hear that we're only using 20% or whatever and that it's going to get better. Because, you know, using technology in the classroom, I know we've been here sometimes and it's like, like really, all that money that we spend and sometimes there's always a technology glitch. That's how teachers in the classroom are like, I only got so much time to, you know, see this period. And then, you know, you're like, hey, is there a kid in here like a Lorenzo Brione's kid? Can you fix my thing that, you know, a bunch of our kids know way more than we do. The other question I have is, I always hear in the news that they stole, you know, Queen of the Valley's data, and now somebody's holding it for ransom and they want you to pay up. How safe is our synergy in terms of our student information system and all the confidential information that's in there?
Yeah, I'm so glad you brought that up. Actually, the board approved a new program specifically to handle ransomware just, I think it was two board meetings ago, and we literally just finished implementing that now. There's eight different steps that we've taken to secure our networks, including all of our administrators now are on secondary authentication, which they all love, Mr. Cecil Wright, having to pull out your phone and give the extra PIN every time he logs in. But between, you know, firewall and education with staff and all the various applications that are constantly analyzing the data, we've done everything that we possibly can to set ourselves up. Synergy is actually hosted in Amazon Web Services, which is the premier of all hosting services. And there's actually multiple servers, so if one goes down, the other one comes up. So once again, we have redundancy built into a ton of different designs to ensure that there's no one point of failure. And I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah. And lastly, I just want to thank you that, you know, because this is my 30th year in my district, I've gone through S A C, I've gone through School Max, I've gone through Aspen, and going to its new student information system, it's a pain in the neck because you know your reports, you know how to run them and like, what? You want me to learn another one? Like you get sick of it. But I do like the attendance reports that Synergy produces because, like I always say, I want to know what attendance is because we can have all these wonderful programs, all this new technology, all these, everything that we offer. But if the kids aren't here, it doesn't matter. So I'm glad that this student information system can give us real-time data in terms of who's here and who's not and who our child welfare people need to go get and, you know, get them out of bed and bring them to school so that they get the quality education that we have. So you've answered all my questions. We have enough bandwidth, so we're not going to get, you know, clogged up. We're not going to get an email from Dr. Zuniga saying, guess what? Our student information system shut down, they stole our data. You know, we have to start from scratch. And then I get excellent attendance reports, so that's kind of what I care about. So thank you, kudos, and keep up the great work and enjoy your vacation.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. I appreciate that.
I think that's about all the comments, Mr. Stillman. Our kids are definitely better off having you in their district and our staffs. So I really do appreciate all of your hard work, so you're very deserving of all those accolades. And with that, just happy birthday, happy 21st.
Thank you so much. Means a lot coming from one of our parents, so thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, Dr. Zuniga, you want to introduce our next presentation?
Eric, thank you, President Salcedo. This is our final presentation for the evening, and thank you for waiting patiently, by the way. And I want to welcome everyone to our board meeting tonight. We have a collective group that will be presenting the update for the board on our district's student wellness centers. And I know that one of our board members had the pleasure of doing a tour of the facilities about two weeks ago. Mr. David Diaz, who was joined by Mr. Leon, Director of People's Services, and some of the team members at the sites, were very excited to provide the entire board a visual and really an update with the individuals who spearhead these environments for our students at every one of our school sites. So this is a first for Elmani Union, excited what's to come next year since this was more of a starter year, a transition year, and really learning from some of the good things that have already occurred on our campuses to these wellness centers too. But we've come a long way, and I want to personally thank the board for taking on this initiative as a priority. I know it's been embraced well by our director here, who has done an excellent job in coordinating and also supporting our school sites on their needs too. I want to welcome Mr. Leon. Before I do that, I'm going to hand it over to our Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Ceso, who's been really the person who has supported strongly Mr. Leon on this initiative and his responsibility overseeing that. So, Mr. Ceso?
Yeah, first of all, again, thanks to the board for the support you've given this program as we grow it. Mr. Leon has been working on this over a year now. As we started working, putting the wheels in motion, we knew we were going to come back and need the support for our students. So this has been a work in progress for quite a while now. And it's really exciting to see the amazing team that he's assembled here. And they are amazing, I kid around with them, but they are an amazing team that's doing amazing things. And I use the word amazing, that's the highest level I can ever say, is that I appreciate every one of them. The things I'm getting from how they're supporting kids is really great. But this has been a work in progress and is still continuing to grow. We've got many plans in the future, and I can say this, it's going to be like the Golden Gate Bridge. We're going to paint it, we're going to paint it again, we're going to paint it again because we're always going to be changing, moving, you know. And they've already started doing that. And it's a really neat progress. They're feeding off each other. Something works at one school, they're ripping into another school, and they're really growing the support for our kids. And we're excited about what they have in store for the future. And tonight, they're going to be sharing with you guys where they are now, actually where they started, where they are now, and how much they've done in a year, and coming back and giving our kids the support that they need. And again, this is a growing and changing, and they're adapting, and it's a lot of work that's taken place over the last year. So I appreciate Mr. Leon. He's done a great job with his team, and it's all yours now, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, President, Dr. Zuniga, Cabinet members and board members. If you allow me, I'm going to go ahead and ask our team to join us, and through the presentation, we'll go ahead and do their introduction. Earlier, we heard the reference of It Takes a Village. And it is truly my honor and my privilege to introduce you to a new component of this village. Some faces here are longstanding partners of ours, employees of ours, members of our community. An additional portion are new resources and individuals that have worked with our wellness centers and have been critical in developing those services through your support and the approval of the independent contractor agreements. So I honestly stand here very grateful, very humbled for not only the opportunity, but the enormous support that I've received from not just the board, cabinet, Dr. Zuniga, in being able to launch this program and address our student need. So before we begin, I'd just like to share that we currently have a wellness center established at every single school, including Fernando La Dazma. It really was my goal to be able to introduce centers at every single site at the same time, but given circumstances, we've been able to, at this point, establish one at all sites. With that said, every center is dedicated to ensure that we address the student mental health needs and that we target stigma actively and proactively in creative, fun, engaging ways. We understand that for a good portion of our student body, it's not exactly cool to go and ask for help. This team here is at the forefront and spearheading it to make it cool to get that help and make it fun. We acknowledge, we recognize that our students are going through a lot of difficulty, whether it's home, whether it's pandemic, whether it's our community, whether it's our school. We need that supportive, friendly face, nurturing approach, that hand on the shoulder saying, Miko, it's okay, we got you. And that's the Elmani way. So in addition to that, I'm also very proud and happy and excited of how welcoming our site administration has been in not only providing space, providing resource, providing trust and opportunity to give us that real estate that is difficult to come by, to weave in this new program and this new resource into everything that we're doing, whether it's a class presentation, an activity during lunch, something after school, something in Saturday school. We have quickly become a critical member of that site family and the services that we provide. At this point, I've shared data with the board previously, but I'm also very humbled to share that we've been able to address the needs of thousands of students, whether it be walk-in, mental health referrals, crisis support, supporting their parents, families, on campus, off campus. I'd say that, as in most years, we've experienced tragedy as an educational family as well. And I'm proud to say that we have been there to support our students, to hold their hand, and not just theirs, but moms and dads and brothers and sisters on a weekend at night. And it's, I would say, the one thing that brings me the greatest joy and pride in the work that we do. So without further ado, I want to highlight two programs, and I'm going to hand off the presentation to our team members here before we get into the school presentations. Thank you. I'll introduce now Ms. Daniela Chavez.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for letting us be here and for welcoming us. My name is Daniela Chavez, and I'm one of the Wellness Coordinators. My role is really special because I get to be the coordinator for our Wellness Intern Program. And this is a really exciting program. It's a partnership that we have with A P U in their M S and Counseling Psychology Program. This is our very first, as you know, it's our first year as a wellness program in general. We also decided to start a Wellness Intern Program at the same time. We have our first cohort of trainees. They're on the road to becoming licensed professional clinical counselors. They're each placed at one of our wellness centers, and they've been able to provide individual and group counseling, as well as workshops and any support for events that we've had, like lunchtime events or different special events that we've had for students for the monthly resolutions that you all passed. We've been able to do that with our interns as well. They're also able to provide walk-in mental health services. So each intern does have a caseload of students that they see regularly, and then they also provide services for students that walk in. As the coordinator, my focus really has been on the development of the program through collaborating with A P U, creating and providing supervision, ongoing supervision, and daily intern guidance and mentorship along with my team. The goal is really to expand the program through the development of partnerships with other master's programs. So that's my goal, and that's what I intend to do in the next coming years.
And next, we'll introduce Imelda Morones, who serves as Wellness Coordinator at South Elmani and spearheads another one of our programs.
Evening, everyone. I'm so grateful to be able to be here and to talk about our program. So early on, when we first began developing this program, we quickly learned how important it was going to be to centralize any communication with our mental health partners, any collaboratives or outreach that we were going to be doing with this program. So in centralizing these efforts, we really wanted to ensure the consistency and the efficacy of all communication and everything that we were going to be doing, all the services that we were going to be bringing in. So currently, I'm actually, or I have worked on streamlining all of the processes with our community mental health agencies. And at this time, we are collaborating with 10 agencies in the community. And part of that streamlining effort includes the M O U process, making sure that it's all current, and also any kind of programmatic needs, any changes that are happening along the way, also agency referral capacity and referral status update logs. Now, these efforts have been really important specifically in this year. There have been staff shortages throughout the community mental health agency field and the field in general. And so to be able to make sure to have communication with our agencies and who's accepting, who's still open to receiving referrals from us so that we can make sure to refer our students in a timely manner. Also, something that was imperative this year was being able to have that open communication with our agencies for COVID-related information. I ended up having to gather from each of our agencies all of their staff information, vaccination status, created logs for that. And it was very intense, but very necessary. We also have collaborative relationships. I'm currently participating in the El Monte Advisory Council, and that's through Foothill Family Services. I also participate in the DMH Service Area School Mental Health Collaborative, and we meet bi-monthly. That is a collaborative with Department of Mental Health, and we also, it also incorporates all of the local, excuse me, all of the local agencies and also some school districts. And it really is important to be a part of that because it kind of keeps the finger on the pulse of the field and where we're moving. And even some of the efforts that Department of Mental Health is doing to be able to spearhead new ways of being able to broaden programs so that they can accept referrals. Also, I am a part of the El Monte and South El Monte Community Alliance Steering Committee. I've attended two of those meetings, and I haven't done too much with them just because we've been really busy with the centers, but I hope to foster that relationship as well. And with outreach efforts, I really just try to identify and advocate for different services that are needed within our school district, whether it's mental health resources or community resources. And also have been working on engaging different school districts, just kind of seeing what sort of youth-focused services are available in other areas that we can bring into our community. community. That's it for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, before we start off with the schools, I would like to highlight, I think I've been here before the board, before ensuring you that we take the responsibility of advocating on behalf of our schools and our students very seriously. And my statement has been that if agencies are not responsive to the needs of our students, then we will find other partners. Much as we've worked on that, I have to give credit to our Wellness Coordinators because they have been able to take those efforts and magnify that greatly because of their professional expertise, their knowing, their knowledge of the inner workings of agencies. So the good work that was done has now been magnified, and it is allowing us to improve the quality of service and better coordinate with those agencies. Now, with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and introduce our group for Arroyo High School.
Hi, my name is Sayola Salazar. I'm the Comprehensive Student Support Coordinator at Arroyo High School. At Arroyo, we currently have one clinical intern. Her name is Bechetra Soch. I just wanna share a little bit about our program. I really wanna highlight, Mr. Leon already kinda shared a lot about what we do and refer, like in reference to helping students with their mental health needs, but I wanna kinda highlight more of some of the collaborative efforts that we have at Arroyo. Currently, we've been working a lot with like prep and our library and making sure that, you know, one of the things that we made available and Imelda did for our staff and our college students was to provide a mental health awareness, like training. So they in return, you know, they're the ones that are there like till 7:00 PM at night, so if they ever see anything that students might need additional support, now they know how we work, how to refer a student, and how to connect them to us during the school day. So, you know, that's something that I hope to expand on more, to collaborate with other entities on our campus. Some of the stuff that we've been working on as well that I wanna highlight is like, yes, we work with prep, with our library, and we've already done a lot of self-care activities, especially during finals week. I don't know if we can go to the next slide? So this is what I also wanted to share with you guys. This is currently our Wellness Center at Arroyo High School. We were provided a space across the way from our Parents' Center. It's really cool in that it's a whole classroom, so it's a pretty large space, and it allowed for flexible seating. So there's, if the student needed like just a minute to take a Wellness break and maybe they're meditate, or just keep to themselves, or come in and talk to someone, there's several spaces where that can be done. If we needed to have a group session, it's also set up to make that available to our students. And another exciting thing happening in our school, coming soon to our Victory Square, we are currently building more space to be able to house our students' needs. Like when it comes to like having individual therapists come from our agencies, like our community partners, like this is where those two spaces are gonna be where they can go in and have some privacy and have those sessions that they're holding currently on our campus. Right now, at Arroyo, they're really just kinda sitting around on our campus. This is gonna provide them that privacy that they need. It's also gonna house like a space for like group sessions as well. That is basically it.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jessica Lopez. I'm the Student Support Coordinator at Almani High School.
Good evening, distinguished board members. My name is Brenda Chavelas. I'm a licensed clinical social worker, and my wonderful, amazing, my support here is Jessica Lopez, and I have to say thank you to her because this is my second week here in this position. And let me tell you all how phenomenal it has been for me to be a part of this amazing team. We have set out to really implement a very informed mental health awareness initiative in El Monte High School. I'm very grateful to you, Jessie, for walking me through all the members that I've met in this team. The teachers have been amazing. The collaboration that I've done within these two weeks has been phenomenal in being able to collaborate with teachers, with my administrators, which includes the Assistant Principal, Ms. Han, including risk assessments, and also being able to be a part of re-entry plans, which has been phenomenal because we have established this collaboration and supporting one another on how to recognize these triggers, how to recognize these risk factors that exist in the school system. Our initiative and our outreach has been very much informed in recognizing the risk factors in the school setting, which oftentimes teachers are the first ones to have eyes on this. And so being able to collaborate with the team has been very, very rewarding for me, not only as a professional, but as a community member, because we've seen a lot of times our students have been the ones to bring in other students. To Mr. Leon's point, we were able to see how students were like, "Hey, come to the Wellness Center, you have someone to talk to." And actually, a student today had said something almost verbatim, like, "I told my friend to come in because I know she was having a hard time." That for me was extremely moving, and I think that I have a lot of gratitude to my team because we're all trying to facilitate and have, spread this message. Our goal is to be able to include the social emotional component into the education system, into El Monte, so that way we can support our teachers. Earlier today, we had a teacher saying how overwhelmed she felt. Being able to support teachers so they can recognize this and feel that it's not all on them, or a team, or a village, and we can support them, and being able to address these needs together and as a team, I think that alleviates a lot of that stress as we're feeling. I think we've all experienced some compassion fatigue, especially during COVID. And so we are very much dedicated to ensuring the mental health wellness of these students by creating a collaborative spirit and working as a team to facilitate that conversation. So our goal this year, as closely wrapping up, as we know June's coming around, we're trying to implement these workshops, we're trying to provide worksheets and different opportunities for children to come in, engage in problem solving, recognizing triggers, having conversations about how do I recognize my triggers? What are the emotions I'm experiencing now? Do I have language to put to it? How can I incorporate having conversations with my parents or my guardians? And so slowly, we're trying to develop these programs with the limited time we have for the school year, but still trying to support our students so they can finish the school year strong and also link them to having access to the Wellness Center, having if they need to take a 20-minute break, if they need to come in and talk to myself or to Ms. Lopez, to be able to support them with any obstacles or challenges that come up, and also be available during the summertime if that's appropriate for them. So that's our goal. We're really looking forward to continuing this process and supporting our, not only our wellness team, but also working closely with administrators and with our teachers. Thank you very much.
So a little bit more about our center. We have four individual therapy rooms in which our mental health agency therapists come in to meet with our students on a one-on-one basis. We, this year, we actually focused on our Wellness Board Resolutions that you approved. Our main focus was to educate our students and to promote awareness on these different resolutions. We worked on different activities with them, such as creating worry boxes, kindness rocks, build-your-own-stress balls, and had different activities that focused on these resolutions. During December, before the finals week, we decided to have a test anxiety workshop to help our students learn how to cope, right? A lot of times, those students start feeling overwhelmed, they worry about what their test will be like, and we wanted them to have tools and techniques to use during that time. We also did several parent workshops alongside with Ms. Liz Gutierrez. We partnered with Rosemead High School's Wellness Coordinator. We were waiting on Ms. Brenda to join us, but thank you to Liz. We did work on creating a schedule and providing these workshops for our parents. We felt that as much as we're educating and creating awareness with our students, we needed to do the same with our parents. The more we create this and make it a norm with our students and parents, the more they start coming to us and asking us for support. A lot of times, we find that our students don't know how to ask for help, and making ourselves and this space available to them starts making it easier for them to come to us. From when I started at Almani in August to now, I see how much students have learned to go in, to ask for help, and the relationships that they're building with us in the Wellness Center is just really, really amazing to see how they go from just wanting to be in there and taking some time to themselves, clearing their minds, to now wanting to have conversations with us and asking for help and coming on their own and asking for resources, services, and we are there to help them. Thank you.
Evening, board members, administrators. My name is Cielo Arteaga. I am the Student Support Coordinator at Fernando La Desma. As you already know, Fernando is a unique school. It's a smaller school with a lot of students that need a lot of help. We are focusing on building up the Wellness Center. We just opened in April, so we are definitely working into making it a better place for the students this summer and for the next years to come. Thank you to Daniela for all the help that she's done. Our Wellness Center is, you know, our goal is to create a calming space, a safe and supported and, you know, area for them to come and feel they could get the help they need. A lot of our students through the pandemic have fallen behind more than usual, so having the mental health services has helped them, has, you know, made them more positive. I do have students coming up and saying that they really admire Daniela for her efforts in counseling them. We are here to support them, and we are encouraging, you know, encouraging the love and support that we could, you know, give them.
So as Cielo said, our center just opened at the end of March, and so we're already seeing a really large presence of students utilizing the resources, right? So something that I like to joke about is that, you know, as soon as I turned on the lamps in the Wellness Center, students started walking by and being like, "What is, what is this room? Like, what's going on in here?" And so just seeing them get excited, right now, as you can see, we have floor seating. Eventually, we will also have couches and all of that, but the students have enjoyed just like laying on the floor and hanging out like that. Even now, like during lunch, I have a usual group of students of about 15 to 20 students that'll come in and we just, there's like joking around, but then they're also like, "Ms., you know, can we talk about relationships? Can we talk about this, right?" And I'm like, "This is exactly the space for you to talk about that stuff." And then I do have students who come in with crises, and they need, and they need that additional support, and it's just been beautiful to be there. So some of the services that we've been able to provide in just the limited time that we've been there is some individual and group counseling, crisis response and intervention. We've also done some student and staff outreach, as well as staff training and development. During the December break, I got to train some of the, some of the La Desma staff actually came to some of my professional developments, and it was great because I got to develop those relationships with them, right, outside of the school. And also some parent engagement during open house. Cielo and I worked really hard to get the room ready so that it would be ready for open house, and then parents were just all about the Wellness Center. They just loved it, they were asking if they could come and hang out in there. And so that gives me hope that we're gonna have a really good parent presence, and we're gonna be able to do those parent workshops. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. I know it's later in the day, so we'll make it fast, but this is a very, it's a privilege and an honor to be a part of this program with this district. This is one of the few districts that I know of that has this type of center, which I think it's been, it's very essential for these teams. Oh, by the way, my name is Patty Rodriguez. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist, and I'm also the Wellness Coordinator for the program. So here at Mountain View, we're very busy. We have a large flow of students coming in. They're talking, they're speaking, they're bringing in their friends. We even just get kids dropping by and saying, "Hi, Ms., how are you? I'll come by later, or if I need to come by." There is that, that, you know, just validating the stress that the pandemic has caused them, the anxiety coming back with, the social anxiety has been a big thing. We have some students throughout the week that may drop in if they're having a panic attack, so that's a space to do that and just kinda validate their feelings, and it's okay, it's normal, and they can go back to class rather than going home and missing the rest of the school day. So this is definitely a space to just get some quick coping skills, but then at the same time, if they're, if they need something more, we have the two interns at our site, and those two interns provide ongoing therapy if they need, they would meet with them once a week. We also have a peer supporter. He's over at the corner, he's on the laptop in that picture, the middle picture. He is Aiden, and he will provide any type of support that the students need, whether it's like resources. And then those two offices are the intern offices where they meet with the students. So we, I, we make it cozy for them to just take a space to pause if they're feeling overwhelmed emotionally. This is the space to come in and just, you know, just be present and just breathe, and we have all the knickknacks, the fidget stuff and puppets so that it can help them to regulate their anxiety and then just continue on with their school day. These are some of the workshops that have taken place. We did do the Teen Dating Violence Awareness, You Got a Friend in Me, Hope Notes. So this is during lunch where some of the kids are participating in these activities. And as you can see, like, there is, you know, they kinda, they walk around to see if it's safe, and then they all start gathering, and then you get a flow of kids coming through. They're really enjoying the program. We also do the Suicide Awareness and Crisis Intervention is, it's very important in this population, this age. There's, there's a lot of that stuff happening, so we address the, if there's ever any needs with linkage to a higher service that they may need to be at, we provide that space, we get the resources. And I have to say that the admin at Mountain View has been amazing. They've been so supportive, and the counselors, there's a lot of communication happening. There's, there's one Assistant Principal that's in here, so I'm gonna put him on the spot really quick. He, he brought in, one day, he brought in one of the students that was stitching, she's constantly walking around, and he said, "Okay, I'm gonna send you to the Wellness Center." So she came in, she was a little hesitant about meeting with me, but once she left, I mean, she, we met, and she says, "I don't wanna talk about my stuff to anybody." By the end of the meeting, she was in tears, and she thanked me, and she walked out, and I just wanna say thank you to the administrators for that collaborative effort. It's so important, and it's appreciated. I think we have another slide? Do I have another slide? No, that was it? Yeah, so there's, the rest of the staff is not here with me today, so I'm right here today, so thank you so much for your time, everyone.
Good evening, honorable members of the board and Dr. Zuniga and staff. My name is Hector Doggad. I'm the Comprehensive Student Support Coordinator at Rosemead High School. Unfortunately, Ms. Liz Gutierrez could not be here with us today. Just wanna give a brief overview and what we've been able to do here in the last six months, seven months there at Rosemead High School, and the tremendous impact that the Almani Union High School District has made at all the respective high schools here in our district. And I generally say this, we are at the forefront of supporting our families and our students when it comes to mental health. I've talked to other educators here in the area and other school districts, and they're envious of what we're doing here in the Almani Union High School District because, again, we're doing it, and we're doing it right. And with that said, this was a vision from Mr. Larry Cecil and Mr. Alejandro Leon, and again, from the support of the entire board, we've been able to service and make the impacts not only on our students, but also... not only on our students, but also the tremendous impact we've had on our families. Because again, we're servicing not only our students, but also our families. If we can click to the next slide, please. This letter here, this note was actually left in the office from a student and it's very impactful. I'm reminded every day of the impact that we make on our students, whether we know it or not and just having our doors open. It says, "Thank you for being a place that I can go and enjoy and playing the games and doing the activities you hold. Thank you for being a safe place for kids." And that's what we are. We've been a safe place, not only a safe place for our kids, it's a fun place, it's an active place. Every morning, I have a group of my students, my special needs students that meet me at the door at 7:30 every day religiously, help me set up and we enjoy the Panther Cafe also. I buy them breakfast and them helping me clean and maintaining the Wellness Center. These students are in absolute joy to come in and participate in our program. So some of the student services that you see up there, we've worked with mental health referrals, working with Paws Nami, our community resource linkage, our notary services. This is tremendous service in supporting those parents that might need affidavits for childcare. It might be residency affidavits, caregiver affidavits. This has been, this has been a tremendous impact that we've had there at, at Rosemead since I've been there in November. So thank you for that. Our peer support and doing home visits, the home visits. I invite our educators, I invite our teachers, our administrators to really come out and see how our students live and show some empathy. And I have to go on record in recognizing Mr. Donald Quick here. He's been one of the teachers who has really recognized the needs of his students. And I get more students, his students coming in and visiting our center and Wellness Passes because he understands the needs and what our kids are going through. And I've said this over and over again, teachers and administrators and staff need to understand that sometimes our students aren't concerned about that math quiz or that English test. They're more concerned about where they're going to lay their head down tonight, where they're going to get their next meal and whether mom and dad are going to be able to pay the rent. So with that said, a lot of the different mental health issues that our kids are coming into and visiting us with, it's been a tremendous impact in having our staff, our intern, having Mrs. Liz Gutierrez there. Our guidance department has been absolutely wonderful in supporting our, our students. You can see here, there's a number of different events that we've been able to host. November was the Meet and Greet, January COVID Fatigue, February How Balanced Is Your Wellness Wheel? March, we had a Walk for Wellness and Teen Substance Abuse and Alcohol Workshop. April was Stress Awareness and Coping Skills, as well as a Paint Night. And May, we're actually doing a parent visit to the Arboretum and this is all in collaboration with Learn. Again, I want to thank the partners who have been so instrumental in supporting the success at Rosemead High School. And we did have a little video, Mr. Leon, I don't know if that thing is embedded. It is a little video, you're right. Let's see, let's see if they can... I'm sorry about that. We'll, we'll send you the embedded. So some of the different activities that we host. I think I was singing some "Worah Me" there. And so one of the really positive and fun activities for our students is usually every Friday we'll host a different activity. It'll be karaoke or it would be Kahoot Trivia. We have a number of different prizes. We have snacks in there and it's a very welcoming and inviting place to be. And I want to thank Board Member Diaz for coming on and visiting. I want to open the door and extend the invitation to all our Board Members to come out and visit, not only Rosemead, but visit all our Wellness Centers. And again, I want to thank all our Wellness Coordinators and all our Student Support Coordinators for the work that they do in making the impact and changing students' lives. Thank you.
Hello again, and I get an encore. So aside from being a district liaison, I am also the Wellness Coordinator for South El Monte High School. In developing a goal for our center, I was really mindful of the intention for the center. And I think the most important words in this intention is that the environment that we've created, the result that we want from that, the outcome is that I want to make sure that every single student that comes into that center feels seen, heard and accepted. As humans, that is all that we want. We want that connection and we want to feel seen, heard and accepted. This is really something that we try to promote daily, every second that we're there with all the work that we're doing. It has really been amazing watching this program grow from the beginning and actually doing the work in the centers with the students. I have actually told a relative recently who knows that I started this position a year ago and asked how it was going. And the one thing that I said is, I get to listen to teenagers talk about the most challenging events of their lives, the most traumatic events that have happened in their lives. That's what I do all day long, is listen to them. It is grueling, but I absolutely love it. This is such rewarding work and we are doing it every single day. So we do similar work at all of our sites, but we just do it a little differently depending on the culture of the school. So in our center, we provide direct mental health services and that includes individual counseling. It also includes group counseling, crisis response and intervention. We also provide linkage to resources, whether it's mental health services, whether it's food banks. We also do staff training and with staff training, that also includes professional development. Lots of collaboration happening. We can't do what we do if there isn't collaboration with our administrators, with our counselors, with our clerks. And at my site in particular, I am literally steps away from our counselors and we work very closely together in identifying the students that need the help, that need the assistance and support from our centers. And sometimes they're walking them right over to me and I will see them on the spot. I also am a site supervisor for our Wellness Program Clinical Intern, which Daniela had spoken about earlier. And even that has been rewarding, to be able to share the knowledge that, that I come with and the work experience that I come with and to be able to share that and impress that on our intern is invaluable. Some of the workshops that we've also done through the Wellness Center, we got started a little late with parent workshops, but I've been able to have recently a workshop with, with parents and it was called Cafecito with a Therapist. And we purposely left it open with no agenda items, just so the parents could come in and it could develop organically. And it, the parents were so appreciative, asked so many questions and just said, you know, I really love this, let's do it again. So that was very rewarding. We've also held workshops titled "I'm Not My Anxiety" for our students and Self-Care Versus Self-Love, Mindfulness in You. And, and I also added the Mental Health Workshop that we did and it's basically Mental Health 101. Now you know. I could not leave out these pod chairs. This is the real highlight of our center. Our students absolutely love these iPods and it deserved its own slide. So these pod chairs, you could literally spin them around and you just feel so supported and it feels like you're, you're just in this hug. You're just being held and supported. And so they'll spin the iPod chairs around, stare out the window. We have a wave machine right next to it, so it's very calming, very peaceful. And they just love to kind of come in, take some time, safe space, take their Wellness Pass and they come in for twenty minutes and just shut out the world and just rejuvenate and get to get back into their day. So could not miss the opportunity to highlight these. Thank you very much.
Again, we'd like to thank everyone for the time and the opportunity to share this labor of love because that's exactly what it's been. Thank you for your support, for your confidence and your trust in launching this program. And I assure you that greater things are to come. Thank you.
I want to make a comment. This is one of the centers that we needed in El Monte Union High School District. You know, teenagers is the hardest age. And sometimes the, the, the students don't go with their parents or with their relatives or friends around them. They go in the environment that is nice, cozy and they feel that, they feel, they feel safety. I say this because I know by experience that many students that they really need help, but they can not get it at home, they can not get it with a psychologist. They need it with, with a, with a group of friends that they can understand and they can be there. They can have those beautiful chairs that I can imagine, that are really good. I really would like to have one of those. Yes, all of us, we have to remember when we were teenagers. Teenagers, we always had problems. Even when we had the best of the best, always we had problems and we need to have help. And I'm very, very happy, Dr. Zuniga, for letting us have this kind of center that is so useful. Thank you very much. I really admire you and the most beautiful thing that our six high schools, they have it. It's very necessary. It's now time to have it, that, because it's very important. Unfortunately, I knew, I had students who killed themselves because they didn't have somebody to help them. And when you were talking and giving us these ideas, really admire you and respect you. Thank you very much.
I don't know if you remember, but many years ago, before you took a little break, you, you charged me with something and you asked me to go ahead and take care of our kids for you. And those are words that I've kept with me and a promise that I work every day to keep, so thank you.
Thank you very much for doing that. Yeah, it's terrible to know that students need help and not have it, but now they have it. Thank you so much.
Mr. President?
Mr. Diaz?
Yeah, thank you, President Salcedo. I would just like to start with deep gratitude for the work that you all do every day. To feel, to have folks be seen, heard and accepted. I did my undergrad in psychology and social behavior and I thought that I wanted to be a therapist as well. You know, I did some shadowing and then shortly after graduating, I worked as a behavioral therapist for children with developmental disabilities and autism. The emotional labor that you go through on the daily and the grind of that is just immense. And so I really want to thank you for the work that you do on behalf of our communities and our students. I think, you know, if we would have, back when I graduated in 2006, right, a long time ago, if we would have had something like this, you know, I think it would have been a game changer for my colleagues, myself, people that I graduated with. And so grateful to just have this at our El Monte High School District. They have Wellness Passes now, you know? That to me is like a wild concept, right? Where like the teacher doesn't question you or want to know how long you're going to go to the restroom for, right? We can literally say, I'm going to go to the Wellness Center now and have an opportunity to go to a safe space. And what that does for, for students, I just can't imagine, you know, what that must feel like to have that opportunity. And so again, I just want to thank you and having toured the facilities, you know, at El Monte High School. At some of them, you know, I went at different times, so everyone was doing something different. At El Monte High School, y'all were making water balloons, but you put like Funfetti in there. And there was like different types of activities and abilities for folks to make that happen. I think we spilled one all over the place. We were waiting on some furniture to come in, you know, but we saw, I saw the students very engaged there. At Mountain View High School, you all had a session going on or interaction going on. I didn't get a chance to speak to you, but, you know, I got a chance to see the space. I got a chance to see the counseling rooms. I got a chance to see the potential expansion that's going to happen at the front office, connectivity with the physical health opportunities that may be there. So that's really exciting. As a Board Member, you know, I can't wait for that to happen. And then at a Royal High School, I really got to see like the opportunities for integration or collaboration, right, with one of the mental health practitioners being just right across from the Wellness Center for like higher level crises that may happen, as well as the Parents Center. And then at Rosemead High School, you know, I really want to give a shout out to Ms. Liz Gutierrez and Mr. Delgado, not just because they gave me lemonade and cookies, okay? But because they were sincerely, they were homemade beautifully by some students. The lemon was hand squeezed, that's what I heard, locally sourced. And, you know, just being that level of vulnerable, again, the emotional labor with folks on a daily basis is really tremendous. And, you know, you all are doing lifesaving work, truly, on the daily. It is, it is that. You are doing lifesaving work. And Mr. Delgado was able to share a story with me about just something that had happened very recently. I imagine there's many more stories that are going to be similar to that, that you are going to be dealing with or have been dealing with. And so I'm really thankful for the investment and dedication that this school board, my colleagues, Mr. Larry Cecil, Mr. Leon have made to make sure that we have these Wellness Centers available for our students. And so, you know, my parents used to tell me back in the day, sin la salud, no hay nada. Without health, we have nothing, right? And now that covers mental health as well, right, for all of our students. So continuing to work on the desigmat, stig, de-stigmatization, ugh, y'all know what I mean, right? Of mental health and what it means to be well, needs to have mental health included. And that's why I'm extremely happy to also see the parent engagement that's happening there and bringing in the parents to make sure that we can work through some of the myths around what it means to be mentally well, right? And so again, just thank you, a lot of gratitude and appreciation. And I promise to Fernando La Desma and South El Monte High School, we'll make it out there sometime soon as well. So thank you again for your time and for all your work.
Mr. Vianis?
Thank you, President Salcedo. Just thank you so much for your dedication to our students. As Mr. Diaz just stated, I think that our primary focus on my end is to remove the stigma around mental health. Coming from a family where one of my family members is schizophrenic, I have firsthand knowledge of what it means to live with somebody that you care about who doesn't know how to ask for help, doesn't know how to express themselves when they're having a crisis. And I think so often our family members, our students are in that position and they don't know where to turn, you know? And having these Wellness Centers on the campuses helps to remove that stigma and to make it clear that asking for self, for help is not a sign of weakness. You know, I had the opportunity of touring the Wellness Center at South El Monte High School during open house and, you know, seeing those chairs, yeah, they definitely stand out. And, you know, it sounds kind of hokey to think, you know, that's the focus, but when you provide that welcoming environment, you know, an environment that reduces stress levels of the student that's there, that helps them to calm down and then to allow them to engage with you to get to the root cause of what's, you know, driving their stress or their anxiety. It's impactful. And I'm happy to see that, that we're doing this at every single one of our campuses, including La Desma. Because sometimes, you know, La Desma gets overlooked and we want to make sure that we're not continuing that practice because the student needs that La Desma or just like the student needs at any one of our comprehensive high schools. My question is, what more can you do? If you had, you know, what, what more do you need and what more could you do? You know?
No.
No. Thank you for asking. Um, to be quite frank, uh, the level of support that I have received from this board, uh, from cabinet, in my opinion, I've never seen any, in any other district and I've, I've worked at a few others. Um, I thank you for that and I'm humbled and, and very grateful for it. And I ask, uh, for your continued trust and support. I assure you that our students are in very good hands, uh, with very talented people, uh, very creative people that are charged with not only meeting the needs of our students, but doing so in fun, creative, engaging ways. So I'd just like to say thank you.
But also, um, one of the things that they did mention when I was there, um, Mr. Leon, but we're working on it already is more clerks support, you know, because of some of the services that need to be, uh, provided. And so one of the things that I think is already in motion is having more clerks uh, for check-in attendance, uh, working with students. And then you already have the iPads for the consistent data collection though, right? So that's already in the works, but I think the one thing that I heard was more clerks. And then the other qualitative or like the anecdote that I got is that we're quickly outgrowing the allocated space. And so maybe thoughts on maybe two wellness centers per site? No? Okay.
That would be awesome. Um, you know, one of the things that, one of our foreseeable struggles at this point is that we are hitting a lull in, uh, intern candidates for next year uh, because students have just not applied and are not at that level, uh, and ready to partner with us. Uh, that in itself is, uh, going to be a challenge for us. We were anticipating having at least 12 interns, if not more. At this point, we've only been able to secure one. Um, I have to highlight my colleagues, uh, the Comprehensive Student Support Coordinators because as district employees, they've bestowed their trust and their faith in me to allow me to repurpose how they've worked and integrated themselves into the wellness centers and have really allowed us to grow those programs. Um, I still have an obligation to address student intervention, uh, like our SSTs in a new, uh, manner and, and way that we're piloting this year. And that process might get placed on hold, uh, depending on what or how we can move forward. So thank you, Mr. Diaz, for mentioning the clerical, uh, support because that would allow us to continue to function in a very similar manner. Thank you.
And we've already started that process, so.
Thank you, Mr. Leon. Uh, that's all, Mr. President. Thank you.
Mr. Poya?
Yes, I think that, uh, mental health and all of the, uh, the wellness centers that we have uh, couldn't have come at, at a better time. You know, the buzzword in education is MTSS, multi-tiered systems of support, which encompasses three areas. It encompasses academics, it encompasses the social, emotional, and it encompasses behavior. The schools have done well over the years in terms of addressing all the needs of tier one, tier two, tier three when it comes to academics. We're great at that. We're good at that. Uh, we're not so good with behavior. Special ed is, you know, and regular ed is getting a little bit better, but there's a lot of work that needs to be done, not just in our district or my neighboring district, but throughout the state. You know, we don't have a whole lot of behavior specialists because they're so expensive and it's so specialized. But I do like all that we're doing in, with the mental, uh, uh, health centers in that it's going to address socially, emotional needs and addressing the tier one, the tier two, tier three. Because there isn't enough support here to address all the needs at a high school that's got thousands of children. So therefore, there must be a, a triage system of which kids go to the mental health agencies. Um, a- a- and I say that and I know that because for 30 years I've done mental health. So I have a lot of relationship with ANKI Youth and Family, with Footheal, with Delmanzer, with Asian Pacific Clinics, with everybody that's, uh, you know, out in the field. And yes, there is a shortage right now, you know? We'll even get emails from them saying, hey, we can only take your high-risk kids, the ones that are the 5150s or they got hospitalized for whatever and, uh, all the rest. So that's where you guys come in, where you can hire the low, lower level, level children. Um, one thing that I am, uh, excited about is, you know, we talk about 21st century skills and we talk about the collaboration, the communication, the creativity and the critical thinking. I like that, that you guys are, uh, applying 21st century skills because I see an array, I, I, I focus on your titles. I wanted to know who's the MFTs, who are the LCSWs? And I couldn't help but pick up on who were the Comprehensive Student Support Coordinators, okay? A lot of people don't know, you know, what do they do? What do the Comprehensive Student Support Coordinators do? I know, because at the time when we had a board composed of Salvador Ramirez, Marielena Talamantes, that was brought up earlier, uh, Estela Torres de Segres, Juanita Gonzalez, and yours truly Ricardo Paria, we purposely hired Comprehensive Student Support Coordinators for every school because we wanted them to get trained on specific elements. Now, there's a person that I, I wish was here, Grace Galvan, great person, got like 20 years of experience and knows the elements of how to work with at-risk kids, how to, uh, build resiliency in kids and engage the parents and build those positive relationships and so forth. And so I like the fact that you guys are working together. And I'm also like the fact that today, under the consent agenda, um, there's going to be a training by Lydia Carswell for all of the Comprehensive Student Support Coordinators to kind of strengthen a little bit of their, their skill and, and to kind of specifically identify what it is that they're going to be doing in our school district. Because, uh, I know Mr. Diaz talked about, um, we need more clerks. And, uh, you know, one of my concerns is I want to make sure that we don't turn our Comprehensive Student Support Coordinators into clerks. That's why I kind of have been looking to see in terms of when's the training going to come in? And Mr. Larry Cecil says, oh yes, they're going to be trained. And, uh, Lydia Carswell is going to come in and train them on something called the Senate Bill 65 People Motivation and Maintenance Program. Now, what is that? Uh, like I said, I've done this for 30 years. So MTSS is just a new fancy name and a repackage thing that, uh, in education, we've, we've always known that we want to take care of the whole child, the academics, the behavior, the social, emotional. But, uh, just like the CL, LCSWS, MFTs, social workers, they come with specific training that's very intentional, very direct and very, uh, poignant and is specific to, uh, doing these, the, the, the parent trainings, the workshops. There are going to be more of the experts. The Comprehensive Student Support Coordinators also have, uh, uh, specific elements that they have to learn. So I'm glad that they're going to be working together. Uh, I, I'm glad that the Comprehensive Student Support Coordinators, as well as the CL, LCSWS, MFTs, that they're still able to talk to parents, that they're able to build relationships, that they're able to build that trust, because if there is no trust, they will not come. And, and I talk about Grace Galvan because, uh, she's been there, done that. You know, she's been at Rosemead, she's been at, uh, South Almonte. And, uh, I, I've been happy. I've seen some of the, the kids that she sent off to the universities that had all those problems that, uh, when we didn't have the LCSWS and when we didn't have the MFTs and when we didn't have the social workers, the Comprehensive Student Support Coordinators kind of took that on. So continue the collaboration. I think it's great. Um, I, I think that in terms of where can we help? Yeah, I think we should get some clerks to, to log our kids in and sign them in and do that stuff. Cause I don't want, you know, Comprehensive Student Support Coordinators being clerks. You know, I just have to be very direct about that. And I have visited, uh, uh, Fernando La Desma High School. You know, I was, uh, on this dais. I know I was kind of, you know, very direct, you know, with the Chief, Chief Business Officer about, uh, why is Fernando La Desma always last? If there's groups of kids that need it, it's those kids. They need it first. So then we scrambled and I, I just spoke and the board agreed and then boom, it happened. So sometimes you got to say things that might be elephants in the room or that will ruffle people's feathers, but bottom line is, I, I heard, um, raise your hand, the one who told me that said the parents wanted to know if they could come in and, and, and lie down and be there, okay? And I know that I visited you because you used to be at, uh, Mountain View. But then when you came to Fernando, you threw me off and I was like, what? And I went to Almani High School and I've been to the Mountain View one. Uh, and so every, every, every center has its own flavor and that's the way it should be. But I know that Mr. Leon is creating a system, a systematic approach to know exactly, you know, which kids are getting service and which kids are going to be panned out to the, uh, uh, counseling agencies and which ones are going to be handled by ourselves indoors. So continue the collaboration, continue the communication, continue to be creative, you know, and build those relationships and yes, tell the kids the relevance. I like the question where somebody said, hey, miss, like, what's that room with lamps and stuff? Yeah, the relevance is, it's for you. We do this all for you. Like, we get dressed up for you. The fancy, you know, little sandrakes and all the little rooms and it's for you. And when the kids feel that, they're going to be like, oh wow, they truly do care about me. And, and just to end, I love the note. Thank you for sharing the note that you shared because, uh, from Rosemead, um, Councilman Delgado, uh, when I see that from kids, it reminds me of why my rear end sat, sits here and that we're doing the right thing. And yeah, I want to be the envy to the San Gabriel Valley because very few people have put their money where their mouth is to, you know, talk about wellness. I know everyone's doing MTSS, but I know that very few districts, uh, even in my neighboring district, we're doing some great job and we're having a whole lot of counselors. I know there's a whole lot of counselors that are going to be coming, one to every K-6 school and our middle schools already have them, and we're on the right track. Because as a Latino, absolutely, you need to de-stigmatize. For our Asian communities and for our Latino community, we need to de-stigmatize it because I, I've been trying to de-stigmatize it for 30 years and it's not something that happens overnight. As a Latino and a trusted person in the community, they'll listen to me and say, these people are not going to call the social workers and remove your kids and take them somewhere else. They're here to help you, just like our police and, you know, but there's that stigma that's there. Being a brown Mexican with slick hair who speaks Spanish, they listen to me because I've been there for so many years. I can't do it for an Asian family because I look different than them, but I have colleagues that are Asians that can have this conversation and they can get into places that I can't get in and vice versa. So thank you for the work that you do. Thank you for your leadership. Uh, and I'm glad that this board, um, we don't always agree on everything, but I think we agree on mental health. I think we're on the right track and keep up the great work. And if there's something else that we need to put money towards, just tell us because this board has shown that we put our money where our mouth is, that mental health is just as important as academics and just as important as behavior, okay? And if this is your first meeting, get used to Mr. Paria because I always, uh, I, I just talk a lot, so, okay? And for somebody who said, hey, this is really late, I kind of giggled because like, it's only seven. These board meetings go until like 10.
Eight forty now.
Almost nine. It's okay though.
Great job.
Mr. Leon?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Um, I know that, um, you know, getting this off, off the ground has been, uh, uh, I, I think maybe at times felt monumental. Um, but I think that, um, everybody, uh, who has listened in to board meetings uh, really understood that this board was a hundred percent, uh, behind this. It's something that we believe that every school, uh, needs, you know? Um, I will say, being a school principal, you know, here in El Monte, um, this is something that we need to normalize. There are far too many times where even at my school, you know, we recommend counseling or, you know, and we can explain it to where blue in our face and, and parents will just simply say no. You know, because of past experience or things they've been told or, you know, whatever. It could be some other falsehood, right? Um, but this is something that needs to be normalized. Um, it needs to be accepted. And I'm glad that we're off and running in the right direction. I know it's not perfect, um, but we're going to get there and we're going to get better every year. And I wanted to take a moment just to thank all of you for your dedication, uh, to our students, to the students of El Monte Union. Um, we're only going to get better from here. So thank you all so much. And with that, Dr. Suniga, we're going to take off. Quick five-minute break.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, because David and I need a quick break.
Admin teams and our school leaders to make sure that we have a hundred percent graduation program, traditional style with safety parameters in place, hopefully, that we're able to have a successful graduation ceremony for all of our Class of 2022 students. And then again, the highlight for us is returning from spring break. I really touched on what we had to do here, so I'm not going to go into depth of it, but want to make sure that everybody understands again, the ongoing site weekly testing for students and staff is still occurring. Overall, there's been a minimal positive test results throughout the testing window that we've seen, although that we're hearing the county, I just read an update from the county that, you know, case rates in schools are gradually increasing, probably as a response from returning from spring break, and they also said as a response to the removal of the masks as well. So that's probably what was expected too. And then we're going to continue to monitoring and reporting our positive cases to the county and also the exposure, exposure protocols. We've seen that Cal OSHA just updated their actual prevention emergency standards today, so we're going to take a look at that for employees. And then the protocol, protocols for the county are still being modified slightly, but fine tuning for definitions are changing about what exposure means, what close contact means, removing verbiage. I mean, we were just, this week, we were talking about what is the definition of fully vaccinated now? What I'm also hearing that that's also being removed on the Cal OSHA guidelines too. So there is, there is some changes that are occurring and we need to reteach or teach ourselves about some of the new content and language that they're going to be bringing forward as a response to the pandemic and the transition over the spring. Many reasons to celebrate Almani High School District, I think I touched on this one already, so let me go to the next slide, going backwards here. So when we talk about striving in academics, athletics, and performing arts, I just wanted to give you a glimpse about what you see here is a couple of things that our schools are promoting and featuring, recognizing from CIF playoff, Rosebead High School, we have two swimmers that are going on to CIF state, so we're excited that, you know, swimming is not, you know, something that we do at every school site, but Rosebead has embraced that. We're very fortunate enough to have that partnership with the city of Rosebead to have that, and we're wishing those two students luck. Again, softball, track, baseballs in session. I heard Montview High School boys won today by fifteen and eight. They're going on to Oro Grande by Victorville, take on the next one, so good luck to the traveling team out there. It'll be a long day, but exciting day for Vikings out there too, and those Vikings are up there on that left side as well. Royal High School was out at Disney and their choir performing, Chamber Choir, so that's them there over the last couple, I think it was actually at the spring break time as well. And their academic decathlon team there too, I believe that is our Vikings they're featuring and showcasing at the academic decathlon. Above my right is the schedule for AP testing. You don't have to go through it all, but you can see that it's a busy time for our AP students, working hard, including our student board member who's probably getting ready for her next AP test as well, so we wish her luck. And I want to end, but just featuring again, our best high schools US rankings, again, our five comprehensive high schools were featured on the list and we're very proud of that again, for I believe two years in a row, every one of our comprehensive high schools has made that list too. So kudos to all of our schools for making us proud. Signing Day celebrations, this is an event that took place at Almani High School. They did a wonderful job with inviting the students out on a special lunch, display of tables, formal presentations and acceptance, the signings at the tables too, so Mr. Cecil was there representing our district. I, I believe that he was proud there sending us some pictures as well, keeping us informed about that event too. But every school site did it, I just wanted to give you an example about what happened on signing day celebrations. Getting bigger and bigger within our district and very happy to see that as well. Creativity, you know, at work here. So last, thank you to our teachers, classified staff, and parent volunteers. I know Ms. Chambers was up there, was up here this evening, just recognizing the work our classified employees. They do bring it every day, I think that's a great model there, and also our teachers, especially everyone, everyone, you know, I know remembers, I remember every single of my teachers from first kindergarten to high school, and I remember what I've learned from each of those teachers. So if it's any career that, you know, you can be proud of, of every day that you're making a difference in our world, our society, is our teachers too. So think about that tonight, about, you know, which teacher made the greatest impact in your life and why, and really how, how we continue to do that every day to our students. Yes, we, we do acknowledge the work of our teachers that are classified, but we all want to keep in mind that we're here to provide the best service to our students, and I, I say this candidly that we got a good team at Almani High School District, with our teachers and our classified staff and our parents, who are continuing to be invited back to our environments here on campus, which was never the case for a high school district decades ago, where you didn't see a lot of parents now. So we're working diligently on making sure that that continues with our parent volunteers by recognition and accepting them onto our campus with open arms too. So at that, I want to end with a greeting from Room Nine, and this is what I'm talking about, about the difference makers that our teachers have an impact on the student, on the lives of our students every day. And this was sent to me by the teacher, he said, hey, check out what we're doing in Room Nine at the Adult Transition Center. So if you could help me with playing this, Adrian, I think we could just press play on there, right, the YouTube video? There it is. All right. So with that, that is just an update, and I hope you enjoyed that. That was personally, you know, shared with me and said, hey, the board needs to see this, because the smile, the smile of these kids' faces just makes, you know, just my, my heart melt sometimes, just making sure that they're taken care of every day, and that we're supporting our students and staff and our families too. So thank you, board, and that is my update.
Thank you, Dr. Zunigov. Okay. Consent agenda. Well, before we get to consent, Royal has a home game tomorrow if anybody wants to show up, three o'clock. And I understand we have track and field, students that advanced in Ventura over the, in the next, there's just a lot of stuff, and then tennis too, right? Did anybody advance in tennis? There's just tons of stuff going on right now. All right.
From, from the manufacturers for the track and field in order to ensure that we're maintained properly.
Okay. Yeah, that was my question. Thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Mr. Padilla, number eighteen.
Yeah, no, I just want to give kudos to Mr. Larry Cecil, our Assistant Superintendent of Vet Services. I'm glad that we, that we are going to be giving training to the comprehensive student support coordinators. I think it's something that is going to be well received. I, like I stated during the mental health presentations tonight, I think it's great that they work in collaboration, but I just want to make sure that the comprehensive student support coordinators don't get sucked into doing all mental health. There is a, a job description, we were very specific, the board was at the time, in terms of that job description and what they were hired to do, and it was basically to create a safety net for those kids not falling through the cracks. And I know that you know about it and I know about it, but unless we train them, that, you know, they're going to be floundering and they're going to get sucked into all the mental health stuff, which I think is great, but, you know, we need to be very specific about what they got hired to do, and so it's very refreshing to see Lydia Carswell to come in and train the, train them on the elements that have to address the attendance, you know, the truancy, the, the SST, the process, wherever it is that we put it in our MTSS process, the coordination of services team, the resiliency, you know, resiliency building with the students and with our, with our parents. And so again, I will say that the SB sixty-five program or that these positions for the comprehensive student support coordinator will go well in terms of working with the MTSS, and it's, it's MTSS way before MTSS showed up in our school. So thank you for putting that on here, and I look forward to hearing back from the comprehensive student support coordinators. I know, you know, maybe one has been there for like twenty-plus years, but then there's a lot of newbies, a lot of new, fresh blood and some new ideas, and so I don't know if you could talk a little bit about that?
Just, just to make a comment, you know, it's in a consent agenda because she has provided training to our staff before, back in two thousand and fifteen. So, and we only have one CSSC since, you know, they're all new except for one. So it is, it's a good opportunity for them to see the historical and see how they can support it from the original, what it is meant to do. So we're excited about it.
Perfect. I agree with you, so it's been seven years since they've received formal training, so this is, this is great. No further comments, Mr. President.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? Move to adopt the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Now we turn our attention to the regular agenda. First being, consider approval for authorization to make appropriation transfers at the school year end twenty-one, twenty-two.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Consider approval to enter into agreement with lunch assist to provide support in preparation of application to California Department of Education for Community Eligibility Provision, CEP.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Just, I have a question about that.
Go ahead.
I, I know that it was because of you and because of your leadership that we were able to put our students on the, on the provision that, and I think it was provision, is it two or three? I always get it mixed up.
Provision two.
Two, okay. So this is an alternative, an application for an alternative provision that exists. This is different from provision two, correct?
Yeah, this is.
Alatar?
Yes, this is.
Okay, so I know I read it and stuff, and then they showed the charts side by side and all that, but what are the benefits of becoming a CEP versus a provision two?
First of all, it doesn't, CEB doesn't require applications in the first year as a provision two required.
Okay.
And CEB is a total of four years. The first year will have to be done for all students, and then the following three years will be only for those new students who are coming in, so it simplifies the process for, for the collection of the, the data and the certification.
Okay.
For the students, as well as it potentially maximizes the number of free and reduced, it's actually, there is no reduced in CEB, but it's basically maximize the eligible students that can be actually utilized as unduplicated count for SNC.
Okay, I, I just want this question, this is my key question. We, we will provide free lunch to all students, correct? Nobody will be paying?
Correct.
Correct. Okay, I just want to be clear on that, because I remember getting calls from some people saying, hey, my kid's only getting, you know, whatever, vegetables and milk, or they get questioned in the line, and it's not their fault, and that was the big thing that was like, no, not going to happen, not when I'm a school board member, I don't care if we have to pay for it, find the money. I don't care where we get the money from, but we got to pay for it. So I just want to be clear, we are not going to be charging kids for lunch, correct?
Under this program, we're not charging the kids.
Okay. No further questions.
Especially if the state also reimbursed districts for.
Okay, but we will not be charging kids in line, like if my mom forgets to give me my lunch money, the cafeteria manager is not going to stop the line and say, we can't feed you because you don't have your money, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No further questions.
And, and those are good points, because I know that under the provision two, the big idea was to get rid of that stigma, right, of free and reduced, and I don't want to get lunch because, you know, people are going to look at me and.
Yep, you got it.
Excellent question, thank you. Okay, so were there any, anybody opposed?
No.
Hearing none, so moved.
Oh, yep.
No as in not opposed.
No as in not opposed, yes as in approving it.
No, we got it. Everybody has said aye already, so.
Yes.
Number three, consider approval of independent contractor agreement between EMU HSD and Behavioral Emotional and Academic Mentoring LLC to provide independent educational evaluations for special education students.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number four, consider approval of service agreement between EMU HSD and Imagine Learning LLC to provide online, online learning to the end of the twenty-two, twenty-three school year.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number five is consider approval of service agreement photos by Russell to provide high resolution pictures for Santa Monica High School students.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number six is consider approval of agreement between EMU HSD and LA County Metropolitan Transportation Authority to participate in the Go Pass Fairness Program for K-12 districts.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Okay, my question about this is, how does this program work?
The program is offered to every student in our district. The district will pay three dollars for each actual pass for the student. Student will receive an application opportunity to apply for the pass. Once they complete that process and the parents give their consent, then we issue the student actual, actual hard copy of the pass. We also are exploring the digital pass too, so that if the kids lose it, it'll be on their digital app. So the metro is, this, right now, the metro is trying to find a better way, a system on the app. They said that we rely on the card because our, a lot of the phones aren't ready for the app yet, so they want to be fair and equitable for all of our kids, so they prefer that we provide them with, every kid with actual card. So if I am a student that needs to get to a place, it doesn't matter if it's school or it could be on the weekend, they are able to ride free on metro lines at no charge or no cost on an annual basis. So that's the program that's funded, and it's really supported by not only metro, but we're also trying to team up with the city of Almani with their trolleys, with other, other departments too that have actual bus routes too, like Foothill Transit. So anyone that participates in the program is able to ride in those buses, not only metro, but also other companies too.
Oh, good, yeah.
And that starts this fall, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, so our kids get the application from their schools?
Yeah, we, we will promote it, we will make sure that, you know, the kids are informed about it through various means. So once we launch that in the summer, we could do that to start of the school year and it goes on through the end of the year, and it will renew it again on an annual basis.
And for now, it's only MTA, no Foothill, not the white buses, only the other ones.
I think they're part of the program, so they, they actually, they're team, yeah, the metro's program, but Foothill has accepted that, you know, any kid that has that pass is able to ride those buses too.
Same thing with Montebello Bus.
Yeah, Montebello Transit.
Got it, got it.
Santa Monica Big Blue Bus.
Well, Foothill is part of it.
Yes.
Yeah, they're, they're part of the group, but it's actually overseeing, they're, they're like the program, the metro.
Yeah, the reason that I asked that is in the past, you know, when we, I remember I used to have a transportation program and I would give taxi vouchers, not taxi vouchers, but bus tokens, but only MTA would participate in the bus tokens, Foothill would not accept them. So it's great to hear that Foothill has kind of come on board and will help remove that barrier for some of our students, so great.
Yeah, it's Metro Bus and Rail, City of Commerce, Culver City Bus, Foothill Transit, LA DOT, Long Beach Transit, Montebello Bus, Norwalk, Pasadena Transit, Santa Monica Big Blue Bus, and Torrance Transit.
What's our Foothill here called?
Unlimited Rides at No Cost.
Just Foothill? Foothill Transit, okay, okay.
So they're basically the eastern of San Gabriel Valley from Almani.
Great, great, that's awesome. Awesome, awesome, awesome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved.
Just a comment really quick on this, if we could, you know, whenever we can, maybe work with the AME to promote this initiative and still press her or stand in front of a bus or one of the, we can find an Almani bus trolley location, you know, you know, stand in front of one of those, you know, to promote this, because really, this is, you know, the way for our youth to get around, you know, that are carless, right, to be able to get to places, so.
Totally.
Would really love to promote this.
Is, is there a way that we can get some like high, you know, administration from there to come out and we promote it, you know, like somebody wearing their gear, like their uniform stuff from their, you know, like publicity, but invite them and maybe recognize them with a certificate of some sort?
Yeah, there's a point contact that I'm involved in, so I'm happy to have her come down and maybe introduce herself, we can recognize them as well for the partnership.
Get you using the bus.
Can get you to drive the bus.
Yeah, for sure.
I mean, we're going to get you to drive the bus, and that would be a part of this one.
If we build that strong relationship, yeah, Mr. Diaz might get to ride that bus.
Yeah, I think this should extend to board members as well, the metro, Go Pass. No, but yeah, I think it would be great, so if we could do that, little press conference, it would be fantastic, thanks.
Great.
Maybe if they come here, or maybe, I don't know if they'll bring a bus or whatever, but I don't know, like, let's be, let's be strategic about it, let's not just make them come and just take pictures here, but how about like recognizing them and having students and like having a big little powwow, you know what I mean, like balloons and the whole thing, and, and then we, we make it worth their time, you know what I mean?
Right, yeah.
Rather than just us here by ourselves in the boardroom.
Yeah, we could do it at the Almani bus station potentially, or at Almani High School. I think those are two pretty good locations to be doing it at. We can have some students join us.
Yeah, yeah, that, that sounds great.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, number seven, consider approval of resolution number forty-six, twenty-one slash twenty-two for National Foster Care Month.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Consider approval of resolution number forty-seven, twenty-one slash twenty-two for National Teacher Appreciation and California Day of the Teacher.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Consider approval of resolution number forty-eight, twenty-one slash twenty-two for Classified School Employee Week.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved.
President Salcedo, just want to mention, the bags that you received this evening are samples of what our staff will be receiving on behalf of the district, and I want to thank Mrs. Torres for putting those together for you guys, just to give you an example. And as you, those bags have become popular with going on to stadiums now and making sure that's clear, so behalf of our board and you guys, that'll go out to every single staff member. I also want to thank the city of Almani for making a donation to the sanitizers that are touchless, so it's pretty cool that you can keep at home or on your desk, you don't have to touch them, so they self-pump. It's a really a nice token of the city for supporting us as well through the pandemic.
Great, thank you. Consider approval of resolution forty-nine, twenty-one slash twenty-two to celebrate June as lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer LGBTQ Pride Month.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Consider approval of resolution number fifty, twenty-one slash twenty-two in Support of Mental Health Awareness Month.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Consider approval of resolution number fifty-one, twenty-one slash twenty-two regarding the filing of candidate statement for district elections.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Number thirteen, review, discuss, and revise administrative regulation, Regulation thirty-three fifty, travel expenses, first reading. Any comments, any, the big changes?
Interest rates went up, Mr. Alatar? It's supposed to mitigate inflation, right?
Yes.
I'm just joking, Mr. Alatar. You don't need to respond to that.
No, but, I mean, all kidding aside, I think, you know, probably past due, but I know for, you know, as staff is going on to conferences now and, and such, it was very timely that these, that this, at least, this AR get updated. it was very timely that these, that this, at least, this AR get updated.
Yes, and what we'll do is, when we're reviewing board policy again, because of the pandemic, obviously, the last two years have been, you know, just trying to focus on one thing and then trying to do another thing. The, the board policy allows a revisit of three percent per annual. So we, we're going to make a commitment to look at this as an opportunity to, just kind of like we do with the mileage or, you know, the measurement of what's a mile, mileage allowance is. We'll be bringing every year, if there's any increase to the actual expenses that we have for conferences. As Mr. Salcedo mentioned, that we have not done this, so this will be an opportunity for us to really almost be in line about what we should be allocating on a meal distribution per day.
And this is just first reading, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Number fourteen, review, discuss, and revise administrative regulation and board policies in the five thousand series, first reading. Any comments or questions from board members?
None for me.
No?
None for me.
Review, discuss, and revise administrative regulations, board policies in the six thousand series, first reading. Any comments or questions from board?
Not for me.
No?
No.
Okay. Review, discuss, and revise Board Bylaws nine two two zero, Board of Trustees Elections, first reading. Any comments or questions?
None for me.
Okay. And then consider approval of reorganization of Transportation Department to include an updated job description for driver for bus utility.
Move to approve.
Second.
Can I just have an explanation, Mr. Torres? As for the need to reorganize?
Consider approval of reorganization.
Sorry, I apologize. What changed on the, the job description was one minor change. We did have on there very specific a Red Cross CPR card and instead, we wanted to make it more generic, so they could get that from other organizations.
Okay, so that's the only change?
That's the only change.
I thought there was something else, so just making sure.
Yes, thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, so moved. Okay, so now we move on to board communication. Let's start off with Mr. Padilla.
Nothing at this time. I'm, I'm just happy that I see that the COVID cases have kind of calmed down and we've kind of resumed and there's a sense of normalcy and we can, you know, kind of end the year on a good note and I'm excited, hopefully, keep my fingers crossed, knock on wood. I'm excited that we were able to allow our, our seniors to be participating in numerous events and that, you know, that they're going to be having in-person graduations. I think that that's one of the, the main things for families and for parents and for students. When it's their senior year, that's something that you will remember forever and I'm glad that they'll be able to do it in person if all continues to stay well, so that's all for me. Thank you.
Mr. Briones?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items that I want to report back to the board on that took place over the last few weeks. First, thank you to Almani High School for hosting their open house. It was a well-attended event. And a special thank you to Mr. Cuevas for his remarks to the parents and the students that were there that day. And then a special thank you to Mrs. Msara Casada, who I had the opportunity of meeting with and discussing her experience over the last year there at Almani High School and being able to engage with some of her students and their parents who dropped by that day. On April twenty-second, or twenty-first, excuse me, I had the opportunity to join the City of Almani at the grand opening of Fulgen Genetics' new offices here in the City of Almani. Many of you know, those of you who don't, Fulgen provides COVID testing to our district and many other organizations and municipalities throughout Southern California. And so they've actually moved their corporate headquarters into Almani on Santa Anita. The offices are behind the, the airport. So I was able to participate and present a certificate to the CEO, Mr. Shea, on behalf of the school district. They were very appreciative. Their engineering staff did provide a tour of their labs. These are brand-new facilities that they have just remodeled or revamped. And I spoke to, to their staff there and they actually expressed great interest in engaging in, with our district for a potential internship program for our students. So I would, I'd let them know that I would share the information with the board and forward it on to Dr. Zuniga to follow up. And evidently, even before COVID, when they were a much smaller company, they had expressed interest over at a Royal High School, because they were, they're in Temple City, just north of where they're currently at now. But then COVID happened and they, you know, they had a focus on doing the work, providing tests and, you know, being responsive to the clients, so that was kind of put on hold. But they, they would like to resume that, so we'll make the connection with them. This past Friday, I had the pleasure of attending the groundbreaking ceremony at Pasadena City College for the new Armin Sarafian Science Building. Those of you who know PCC know that the previous science building was vacant for about ten years. It, it wasn't, it didn't need structural codes anymore and it was considered unsafe. And so they finally found money, thanks to believe it was Senator Portantino, who advocated for some funding in the last budget bill. And they broke ground on the, on the new replacement building last Friday. So I had the opportunity of meeting with their board, presenting a certificate on behalf of our school district. And I will point out, they were very appreciative because one of their board members asked, you know, if, if I, we had received, or if we had received a special invitation or, or, you know, had somebody had contacted us, I said, well, we received the invitation just like everybody else. And they did express that we were the only school district that was there. Pasadena Unified didn't send anybody, Arcadia Unified, San Marino, South Pass, these are all districts that they serve. So they were very thankful for the recognition and the continued partnership. Did have some, some discussions with some of the trustees regarding the Rosemead Center and our ongoing efforts to ensure that we're serving our community and that they may have the opportunity in the future to continue to use that facility, you know, as, as they work around our own needs here. But they were, they were very appreciative of the recognition there. I do want to highlight, I met a trustee, Tammy Silver, and she mentioned to me that her dad is, is from the first graduating class at Rosemead High School, class of fifty. So I want to say a special thank you to librarian at Rosemead High School, Sandy Bierman. I contacted her as I was leaving PCC. I mentioned this to her and I asked her if she could find a yearbook for me. And she told me to come on over and in the twenty minutes that it took me to drive from Pasadena to Rosemead, Sandy already had the yearbook. She had already found every page that trustee Silver's dad, Alan Warren, was, was on and had, had flagged them. So I was able to take some photos of that, of that yearbook and send them over to trustee Silver. And so she also mentioned, I also mentioned the groundbreaking for, or sorry, the ribbon cutting for our track and field project. And I invited her and let her know to, to ask her father if he would be able to join us, so he could come see Rosemead High School again. And so she's going to make an effort to have her dad come join us next week at the ribbon cutting at the track and field project. Next, I was able to attend the California School Board Association and Association of California School Administrators Coast-to-Cost Advocacy Trip in Washington DC, myself and a few hundred members, trustees throughout California, were in Washington DC to meet with our federal legislators to discuss several issues about school funding, so particularly about SRF flexibility, broadband funding, mental health issues, school nutrition programs, student privacy and cybersecurity, special education funding, early education services under IDEA and educator shortages. So I had the opportunity to meet with Congresswoman Grace Napolitano and her staff, as well as Congresswoman Judy Chu and her staff, to advocate not only on behalf of our school district, but also school districts throughout California. We also had the opportunity to meet with the Deputy Secretary of Education, Cindy Martin, who is also a native Californian, former superintendent of the San Diego Unified School District, and engage with her and some of her team members on what California school districts need. And so it's very, it was very pleasant to actually have somebody in these, in this position at the Department of Ed who is actually an educator, as well as Secretary Cardona, who is also an educator, as opposed to the previous Secretary of Education, who was not an educator. So it was a very, very comforting experience to be able to engage with somebody who knew what you were talking about and most definitely supported the requests that we were making. And I also had the opportunity to meet with FCC Chair Jessica Rosenwarsel, who, as we, we discussed earlier with Mr. Steelman, we were able to, to advocate for additional flexibility with our E-Rate dollars. So she did share with, with our group who we needed to reach out to and what the ask should be. And so I'll share that information with Dr. Zuniga and Mr. Steelman, so that we can continue to advocate for, for those E-Rate dollars, but also to advocate for flexibility, so that we can use them in a way that best suits our school district. And then speaking of flexibility, one of the big asks was for a flexibility with the American Rescue Plan dollars that our school district received. Our big push was to ask for the requirement that school districts commit funds by December twenty-twenty-four, to extend that to December twenty-twenty-six, so that it lines up with other local jurisdictions and municipalities and counties. Right now, school districts are the only ones who are required to commit those funds by December twenty-twenty-four. And there's no reason why we can't extend it an additional two years to line up with everyone else. Makes the, has no impact on the federal budget. The money's already been dispersed to us and committed, so, you know, it gives us additional flexibility. When we met with the congress members, we did indicate that, although, you know, the intent is there to provide the funding to schools, we have to go through a procurement process, we have to go through our own process when it relates to capital projects through DSA, that takes time. And so we need to make sure that we have that flexibility to ensure that we're committing those dollars in the, in a manner that's going to be most beneficial to our students. And the other big push was to, to really highlight that this was the largest one-time investment of federal dollars in schools in recent memory. And if this was something that was done on a regular basis, we would be fully funding schools. And for me, the, the big push was, if you provide this funding on an ongoing basis, we could continue to do a lot more. Because we are not going to, we're not going to commit to programs where we only have one-time funding, because we need to make sure that we can continue to fund those programs. But if you're, if there's a guarantee during the appropriations process that you're going to continue to provide these dollars year after year, it's a big wish, it's a big ask, but if it's there, you know, then we can focus those dollars on not just one-time projects, but ongoing resources, like staffing, like additional salaries and benefits, you know, lowering student teacher ratios, things along those lines. So fortunately for us, our congress members are very receptive to the idea. So it's, you know, on them to go and speak to their colleagues throughout the, the House of Representatives to push for, for that same level of commitment from other members. Lastly, this past Saturday, we had a meeting with the California School Board Association Region Twenty-three. We received a legislative update as well as a budget update. One just key highlight is next Friday, the thirteenth, is when the May revised is scheduled to be released. So please look for communication from CSBA on that topic and they will be hosting a webinar probably that day in the afternoon to provide an update to everyone. And that's it for now, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Diaz.
Thank you, President Salcedo. For me, just again, thank you and appreciation to Mr. Leon and Dr. Zuniga for allowing me to tour the wellness centers. That was really a lot of fun. I appreciated that. The other thing is that I was recently at a, at an event where Congressmember Grace Napolitano was awarding McLaren Hall. I think it was one point five million dollars for that development. And they mentioned that they really, really liked the aesthetics of Fernando La Desma and would like a tour as soon as that's available. And having, bike by there recently, it's like looking fantastic. So I think whenever we're ready to do the grand opening for the multipurpose room, just the market, maybe we invite some of our congress members to see what we're doing at Fernando La Desma. And then the other thing here is El Monte launched, the City of El Monte launched the Universal Basic Income Program, or at least they were in, in March. I don't know, Dr. Zuniga, have you heard anything more about this Universal Basic Income Program? That was going to be for?
I haven't heard anything else.
It's going to be for single mothers, children under eighteen?
I'm meeting with the city manager. I think we had scheduled some time tomorrow, as a matter of fact. So she reached out for a meeting with the local superintendent, so I'm hoping to get more information. Because we haven't had, honestly, we haven't met all year with her.
Yeah.
So we would like to restart that annual monthly meeting that we used to have.
It'd be great to just be able to do some promotion at the high school level for some of our constituents. And then just last, you know, I'm excited, May twelfth, about the Rosemead High School Track and Field opening, finally. You know, so being that it is on track and field, maybe everyone wear their running shoes. We could run across the finish line to cut it, you know, it'll be a photo finish, no race, you know, for that event. But yeah, I'm really looking forward to that, that's all.
Stories to Siguas, go ahead.
Okay, I attended by Zoom to the last meeting where they were talking about the community college. And one of the important things now the community college is requiring to do is to help the homeless, which is very interesting, because there are many young kids that are homeless and the community college now, they are going to help them. Our program, the Girls' Day, is in good hands. Our delegates, they have all the, all the requirements, especially vaccination. The rest of the units, they are having problems because the girls are not vaccinated. But our five delegates are ready. I attend the legislature meetings that I have every, every month from the PTA. And the last one, they were talking about equity. It's very important. I was invited to a special conference in, when the Business and Professional Women's Club, and they gave me this important, they talk, they talk about this important topic that is called Stop Human Trafficking. Have you ever seen this, Ms. Dr. Zuniga? Could you please pass it to him? Because they said that we have to take care of our boys and girls in our high schools, because we have to stop the trafficking right now. They are having a lot of problems at this moment in our South, South California. I got really scared and for that reason, I decided to get the paper and bring it to you. And if you want to check it and see, we have to take care of our six high schools with the boys and the girls. I am, I attend the fundraiser for our Royal High School that we are final, from the PTA. We are going to have money for the scholarships that we are going to try to give to, to our Royal High School. The fundraiser was last week and finally, they allowed us to have it in, in Pisa, this Pisa, what's the name? The Chayes Pisa, yes. And it was a success, because we got enough money to give scholarship to our students in high school, in our Royal High School. This weekend, I attend the PTA. Thank you very much for allowing me to attend to this event when it was close to here, to here, I'm sorry. Close to here. I had to be there at seven-thirty for listening to all the resolutions. And the way that we have to do the resolutions, the discussions, it's a lot of problems. We had a lot of problems to have it, but finally, we got the conclusion to one resolution that is based on the food. This resolution was given for a group of girls that are, these girls are Asiatic and they want to stop having a lot of milk and products of milk in our high schools. The resolution, we discuss a lot in the morning, but when it came to the platform with all people, it was accepted. Now it's going to go directly to Sacramento and see if it's accepted, this resolution. It was a great idea for me to attend to this one, because I learned a lot. And I think that I'm going to try to do another, one resolution for next year. And it came from the, the coach from Rosemead High School, the coach in swimming, that, he really impressed me when he told me that the Southern California is in the whole world, the state where more kids die in the swimming pools, because they don't know how to swim. And I hope that I can get all the information and we can put it as a resolution to teach the kids, when they are little, how to swim. I, I heard that. I, I heard that El Monte City School District is taking all the kids in second grade to the swimming pool, and they are teaching them to swim. That's, also, I got that, that, that good idea, and let's see if I can do it and represent El Monte Union High School District with this resolution. The other part is that the convention was really fantastic. We celebrate a hundred and twenty-five years of the existence of the PTA, and I was very happy to see that El Monte Council has a hundred years. And the first symbol that they put was El Monte Union High School District, when they represent our, our president from the, the PTA, and the symbol of El Monte Union High School District. I was very happy about that. I think that, that's it. That's it that I, I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just a couple things. One, I know was mentioned already earlier, just the ribbon-cutting for next week over at Rosemead. I was actually there last week, watching some of the cross-country, some of the track and field events, and the snack bar was up and running, and, you know, kids were everywhere, and parents were very, very happy and pleased with the facilities, so it's off to a great start. And then just a question about graduation ceremonies. I, I know that's probably the number one question I've been getting right now from parents, you know, have we been pushing out information as far as, you know, is this gonna be a back-to-normal event, are we, you know?
The schools have been informing the parent. We have discussed internally, but I wanted to get through May, the first week of May, before we make formal announcements, since we're a month away now, so expect an update from me either on Friday or early next week about graduation to all of our parents in the community. So really promoting more safety, but assuring a traditional graduation ceremony for our community and parents to enjoy. That's gonna come up.
I'm sure the community would be very happy about that.
Yeah.
So, okay, those are the, the two things that, that I had. You, Dr. Zuniga?
I only have one item, and just because I'm thinking of the calendar in June, we have, as you know, that we have the Outcap adoption and the Budget Adoption, two meetings, and we have always had them a little later, not the first week of June, to provide us time to prepare for the budget and also the Outcap process, right? So we do have that hearing on the fifteenth, and, and in my communication with you, maybe about two, three weeks ago, I understand that we have two board members that will be at the Naleo Conference, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Diaz, I believe, and the challenge is gonna be that we have a event, the conference starts on that Thursday, early morning, out of state, obviously, in Chicago, and the twenty-second is Wednesday, the night before it starts, and most, most of that day is a travel time for those who are going to conferences. I know Mr. Diaz had inquired about a virtual, a virtual participation at the board meeting if necessary, and, and we checked with Leo Counsel, and since we do acknowledge through consent every month that we are abiding by the guidelines and informing the public that this is an opportunity for the board still, we are able to do that. That's not an issue, but nevertheless, I think with the adoption of the, the board, Outcap, and the actual budget itself, it's important to make sure that we have a thorough discussion, and I think that if we are, are here for approving that agenda on that day, making sure everything's set to go, and we may want to consider moving that twenty-second date to the following week. I, I don't recommend that we do it on the following Wednesday, because that's already pushing it on the twenty-ninth, but if we're open to it, and I know, Ms. Torres, secrets also, you have Girls' Day that week as well. I believe that's why you weren't able to go to the Naleo, so I'm not sure if you also considered that too. So I talked to David Norton, our, our Director of Fiscal Services, and he said it shouldn't be an issue, we just have to let Lakeville know that this is our timeline, because it's close to the thirtieth. So if my recommendation, and you guys support it, would you move that Wednesday meeting from the twenty-second to the twenty-seventh, the Monday, at five o'clock? It shouldn't take too long, but it'll formally provide us an opportunity to approve and adopt the, of the actual budget and also the Outcap plan, giving us a little bit more time to make any final changes and then submit it to the county before the deadline on June thirty, I guess.
I'm open to that.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that, too.
Confessors?
Okay.
Okay.
You got it?
That shouldn't be an issue, right? It's a special meeting already.
I'm sure Mr. Norton appreciates the extra week.
Yes, the fifteenth will still be the date, target date for the special, for the regular agenda meeting on the fifteenth, and then the second meeting would be on the twenty-seventh.
Cool.
I, I'm glad that we're doing that, because I was gonna say, you need to schedule a, a ticket for Mr. Steelman to come with me to Chicago to set it up. It's gonna be virtual, so, yeah, I'm glad we changed that. We're not moving the regular agenda, it's set in stone, but the special agenda, we can postpone the one on the twenty-second, move it to the twenty-seventh.
Cool. Anything else, Dr. Zuniga?
Okay, that's it. Just, we'll go ahead and put that on the memo, and then, and I will work on the, that date with Mr. Norton and Mr. Chavilla.
Christine, you want to read out from closed session?
Yes, thank you. For item A, the board approved Leanne Morelli as the Director of Risk Management and Safety by a vote of five-zero. Item B, direction was given, no action was taken. Item C, direction was given, no action was taken. For items D, E, and F, no action was taken.
Great, thank you so much. With that, I want to wish everyone a happy Teachers' Week, and I know Classified Week is coming up in a few weeks, so appreciation to all of our classified staff and all of our moms out there, Happy Mother's Day this weekend, and with that, have a good evening.